Uh, to seek an attorney general's opinion to withhold information. Unless extreme circumstances exist. Uh, the extreme circumstances that would have existed a year ago were not present at the time. And the city sought no reason to withhold information that was requested. Uh, under any extreme circumstances, but instead totally ignored the fact that the request was made three months ago. Uh, and more than three months ago now, more than eighty days ago, I should point out. Uh, and then decided to seek an attorney general's opinion. When already the information and the records requested had been deemed public under the law. Uh, the concern I have with that particular element of that is that that in, in, in effect means the city has adopted a policy. That it is not beholden to the laws of the state when it comes to transparency. Uh, to fulfilling requests, the other open meetings. This is not an individual, uh, decision, it would appear, but it seems to be one of a policy. Uh, that only the council can address and is not something that can be addressed at City Hall. Now this comes on the heels, as I said, a private meeting between myself and the city manager to discuss my concerns. With open government policy within the city of Lamarck, particularly since the date of December ninth, twenty twenty. And we do know that being an officer involved shooting that led a fatal shooting at that. That that could bring extreme circumstances to bear on any community and one, uh, including Lamarck as well. But at the time, uh, of, of this, that the city is still functioning and still has government matters to take care of. And still has to uphold the law in all matters. It's my belief that in, in this process of a series of actions that were taken. Uh, over the time that the city has essentially decided. That its policy on communications no longer exists. That even a- actions that have been okay a few months ago now have changed. And as admitted to me by the city manager, uh, a memo, uh, that was sent to all city staff. Uh, on regarding to e-communication with media, for example. Uh, may have had a chilling effect on, on the process. I come to you here about this because it's the first time in my entire career, I've had to address a council in this manner. To ask for this because of the actions taken here by various people representing the city. And that it's paramount, I think, to full transparency, honesty and truth. That an action is taken to reverse some of those forces. And that action can be whatever the council chooses. I, my own personal opinion, do not believe it's a personnel matter. I think it's a policy matter and a communications policy is under the purview of the city council. And that's why I come before you tonight. Uh, there are numerous communication matters that I've addressed with the city manager. That I do have say that he will eventually get around to addressing them. The problem with is that in some of those cases, more time to address them only exacerbates the existing problem. Recent examples of, of, of this have shown that the city has decided instead of being fully truthful. Just partially truthful can cause inoperable harm. That comes, for example, in a recent announcement by the city regarding illnesses by, uh, members of the Lamarck Police Department. Uh, in which the city refused to give the most basic information. So the public would be aware of what the quote unquote health challenges were. And despite numerous questions about it, it did not, that information did not come from the city. The city tried to cite HIPAA laws, which do not apply in those cases. Uh, and, uh, and at the same time, uh, refused to say anything. So then the citizens of the city, which had full right to know what was happening with its police force. Had full right to know what their own health issues may be from that, were never given the information. The sheriff of Galveston County had to be the one to go public. The mayor at a public meeting then confirmed, obviously it was COVID nineteen. Uh, these are issues that needed to be addressed, but it's, it's not a specific incident. It is an ongoing incident of saying no first. And then only when cornered, only when pressured, saying yes. There have been other issues that I think would be, I, I have addressed the city manager that he can bring up. And which personnel from the city have taken action, uh, that, uh, that would be un- considered unethical. And in some cases improper, uh, legal circumstances. Such as when calling and seeking information through an open records request. Uh, for an, a criminal incident that happened in town. A request made by a city employee back to me directly offered a trade. To withhold that story to be given a different story, one more favorable to the city. That I find unethical and I find problems with. Uh, and it questioned it at the time. And it, and in that information of that trade, it was about, yes, a, a good news story that would have gotten covered no matter what. But at the same time, it was a, an, a, an attempt, an exact attempt to say, if you really want this record, we'll send it over to you. But if you withdraw your request, we'll give you something else. That is a violation of the Open Meetings Act, Open Records Act of the state of Texas. Blatant violation of that, that is, and should not happen, uh, ever at that time. But it goes to even the best of news, the most recent great encouraging news of the city of Lamarck of Amazon locating a facility within its town. The day the announcement was made, no one was made available for interviews except one city spokesperson. Uh, who refused to answer two thirds of the questions that were asked. Uh, when you have a big announcement like that, a plan should be in place to have people available. We, for example, are a television approach to things. And it's, and so no one available for on camera, and I was told repeatedly, no one was available. When I then asked the personnel that were told not available, I said, no, well, it was available. And available anytime for that. This was a missed opportunity for the city at a time in dealing with even the most negative of things. And these are just examples of an ongoing fight. The mayor, uh, the city secretary, the city clerk and the city attorney will have a copy of, uh, or should have it by now. And it wasn't sent until this afternoon, so you may not have it in front of you. Of our response to the latest, uh, 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 my response, I should say, to the request to withhold information. Uh, to the attorney general, which the request to withhold was made three, more than eighty-three days after the original request was made. Um, and in that I outline concerns that I've also expressed to the city manager. Of past issues in which negotiations was, yes, contentious with the city attorney. In which outside of one document that was, that we both agreed with Attorney Clyde Privilege, that all would, uh, be, uh, released. Uh, and that has not happened fully. The trust of a citizenry, the trust of the residences of Lamarck is paramount here. Transparency must be full, transparency must be honest, that is how trust is built. And as I say, in my thirty-five year career of covering this county, the first time I have just, I have elected. To make a public comment before council to have these addressed on a policy side of things. I do not wish ill will on any personnel. I just want them to do a better job under a policy that gives them clear directives. Um, and, uh, and so that everyone will know whether you're inside City Hall. Or as, or a resident of the city, that you know what to expect from your city at any time. That policies are followed, that policies are consistent. As is dictated by the law, all public requesters must be treated the same. Uh, and we have found that that has not happened. And based on what information, I will say not all is being withheld. There's information related to all of this that has been released. Uh, that has been really, quite frankly, not as much of a difficulty. And in that information, however, other things have come to light, which is comes across as what it would appears to be a disdain by those within city government. For those seeking information, referring to citizens as activists or rednecks. Referring to a female reporter during a press conference as the B word. And this is communications among city officials who are in charge of dealing with the public. I ask this not for myself personally. I am neither a resident of Lamarck nor do I have a physical business presence in Lamarck. I ask this as a conduit to the people. That, that this, that policies be adopted and adopted swiftly. I further ask in one specific request here. On this attorney general's, seeking of attorney general's opinion on the request made in December. That the council instruct the legal representatives of the city to withdraw that request. Because if the attorney general were to agree, it'd set a dangerous precedent. That anyone seeking information that the city, any government entity could go outside the law and just stonewall. And then not release the information and not do its responsibilities. The responsibilities for how open records requ- or requests are to be handled are laid out in black and white. There's a handbook that is, that is published every single year. And it says it must be done in a reasonable time and that if it will take longer than ten days, that the requestor is to be informed. That did not happen here. If it, it, that, that, that request, it depends on what the request information is, between ten to fourteen days that a request is sent to the AG. For that, if not, the records are deemed public. In this one specific case that I highlight to you, that has not been done. For example, and while the city seeks other remedies under this, I would have said at the time, if done in a timely manner, would have said. That's reasonable to seek an attorney general's opinion on. However, you cannot get to that point unless you skip over the most glaring point of this, which is the, the city itself violating the provisions of the Open Records Act. And with that, I had again asked that city council instruct legal counsel of the city to withdraw that request. And secondly, uh, set forth that a policy, clear policy under certain guidelines now, and that can change anytime. Of communications for all departments be outlined in writing. And that open communication be allowed again, uh, particularly with members of the press that constantly have to deal. With, uh, those city personnel, so that all news, whether it's considered good, bad, indifferent or otherwise. Is disseminated in a timely manner. That this can't be done in a vacuum, it can't be done in a bulk. That the, that the communications to the public are not through one source or two sources or three. That it has to be multiple sources, including its own citizenry. And I ask you do this not in any other way except for install a trust. Which we can see for many in the community is lacking with city government. And I thank you for your time this evening, and I know you cannot, uh, deliberate or take questions of me. But if you have any questions of me, feel free to send them my way.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Alls, and certainly you know that we can't obviously comment. Uh, uh, during the citizen's participation. But certainly I've heard you, the other council members that are present have heard you. Uh, and, uh, we'll make sure that we are, uh, doing everything we can to understand your concerns. Uh, and to communicate the will of the people to our city administration. Thanks, CJ.
Good, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, Council.
Robin, are there any other, uh, requests for, uh, public hearings?
There is a, uh, Nikisha Paul.
Okay, she's here for the workshop.
What about Dr. Shannon Gyo Wright?
Workshop.
Okay, okay, and then there's another seven one three oh oh one, I'm not sure. He wants to speak or not. Do you like?
Are there any other persons on this call that would like to speak during citizens' participation? I'll ask one more time, are there any other persons on this call that would like to speak during citizens' participation? All right, let's move on to item four, old business. Uh, item four, uh, is, four A is discussion relating to the Safe City Initiative. So we know as a council that, uh. Because of the issues that we faced, uh, in the past year with violence and, in particular gun violence. As it affected and impacted our community, uh, that we have decided to move forward with a safe city initiative. Part of that is understanding what it means to be a safe city. Uh, I believe, uh, here recently, Councilwoman McCullough, uh, asked for this workshop. Uh, and she invited, uh, she asked that we would invite two guests, uh, and those guests are here tonight. Uh, and so I would just like to welcome those two guests. And I'd like to ask you one at a time to simply state your name and who you're with, uh, and then, uh, we'll proceed.
So I'm Shannon Gyo Wright, and I'm with UTMB Center for Violence Prevention.
Welcome, Ms. Shannon, Dr. Shannon, Dr. Wright.
Shannon's fine.
Doctor, what did I say, is it Dr. Wright, can I call you Dr. Wright?
Uh, it, it, if you're wanting to be technical, it'd be Gyo Wright, but Shannon's fine.
All right, I'll call you Dr. Shannon, how about that? Welcome, Dr. Shannon.
Thank you.
My name is Nikisha Paul, I'm with the four oh nine Action Network, we are a community-based, um, organization.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Paul. Let the record reflect that Ms. Paul is also, uh, our school board president for Texas, Texas City Independent School District. And that's important because many of the folks that we are speaking about tonight, uh, folks that, uh, have recently, uh, finished school. And so it's important that, uh, she give us perspective on that as well. Now, uh, what we're going to do is we're going to have a, a question and answer session. Uh, we're going to open it up to the council, but before we do, I'd like to ask Dr. Shannon. If you would kind of give us a little bit of an understanding of what you do, uh, at UTMB. And how this might help us in this discussion, followed by Ms. Paul's. Uh, understanding of what the four oh nine Action Network can provide to this discussion as well as her experience. Uh, as a school board member and school board president in our community. Dr. Shannon.
Thank you all so much for, um, inviting me to be here. So at UTMB, at the Center for Violence Prevention, I direct our Health Policy Research Division. Um, and so, you know, that could be from the federal state to here, the local level of thinking about different policies. Um, specifically health policies and that we can implement to reduce violence in our communities. I mean, so as part of that, um, and there's four or five faculty at the Center for Violence Prevention. Who are all working in different ways, um, on these issues. And so we have faculty working on domestic violence, dating violence, healthy relationships. Um, structural violence, so looking at, you know, the ways that systems can create violence, um, policies. And so a couple of projects that we have going that I think would be interesting for you all to think through. Um, in sort of two, I guess buckets, and that's how I like to think of solutions. So trying to be solution focused here would be both the environment and schools. So I'm really glad that Ms. Paul is here. Um, so the environment, we're currently, and we have a grant with the city of Houston to do, um, some of you may have heard CEPTED. So that's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Um, and I can go into more details about that in a little bit. Um, and then, um, for school-based work, looking at both universal, um, healthy relationship programming in the schools. So that's something that we do throughout, um, the Fort Bend School Districts, um, Houston School Districts, Galveston School District, Dickinson School District. And it's called Fourth R, Reading, Writing, Relationships. Reading, Writing, Arithmetic and Relationships, um, even though only two of those start with R. Um, and so it's actually putting in, and so the health class that students take is replaced with this healthy relationship class. So you're not just learning about like, don't eat too many breads, but you're also learning about how relationships. Um, can, you know, healthy, unhealthy, abusive relationships and are also part of your physical and mental health. Um, and then also looking at funding mechanisms in schools. And so I am, am on the advisory board of the Children's Defense Fund in Texas. And so one thing that we have been pushing for policy-wise is in schools, for every dollar that you spend on kind of like. Police hardening schools, you would also spend a dollar on mental health. Um, so a social worker, um, you know, a therapist, social emotional learning, whatever that might be. So that you mirror those dollar to dollar initiatives. And so that's my quick kind of spiel, and I'm happy to take questions and I'll turn it over to Ms. Paul.
Ms. Paul.
I have a question, sorry. Good evening, everyone, thank you all for having me. Um, so I'm with the four oh nine Action Network and, um, we are a community organization. We've been in existence for a little over a year now. And we are a grassroots organization that, um. Want to resolve, um, violence in our community. Um, a lot of the, the individuals that have, that these things have taken place, um, they're, they're graduates. But what's happening is that they're a little older than the students that are in the schools. And they're reaching back to those students in the schools and they're giving them, um, it's almost like a negative outlook on how to move forward to do the things that they're doing. And so our goal is to get in and mentor, um, these students before they get out of school. And to give them some type of exposure. And so, um, in order to do that, we've got some goals in place. Um, where we want to work with, um, local municipalities in, instead of sending students always to DAP and different things. We want to be able to see if we can get some of our men who, um, in their day were, were, were involved in some of the same activities. That these kids are, are in right now, and they've, they've changed themselves. Um, they, they've got jobs, they, they're, they've gone back to school, they're educated now, they've got degrees. And so they want to share, um, their experiences. A lot of these guys that are in our group, they've been to the penitentiary. Um, and so they, they know firsthand what street life looks, like, street life looks like, how it happens, what happens. And they want to share those experiences and show them how to either A, stop it before it starts. Or if they've already started, how to get out of it, how to change mindsets. And so, um, that is a lot of what we do. We, we had an event where we did a, a call out to one hundred, uh, black men. Now, this, this organization is not structured to just black men. But the call out, um, was in response to, when you look at the statistics right now, just in our area, we're looking at. There's a high minority population of, of men that, um, that are, that are getting into trouble. And so, um, we wanted to do a call out to see what men would stand up and would be willing to stand in the gap. Um, for these students and how can we help them? And so we're trying to move forward in some initiatives, we want to do some things where we've got a call out. Um, to all the men in Galveston County, black, white, brown, everyone. And basically we want just some kind of snippets of men talking about things that they do. Um, give some exposure to show these kids, um, that there are men out there that are willing to stand the gap. And they're willing to share, um, their story. And so they can see that there are people right here in their very communities that have been there and that have done that. And how do they, you know, and, and, and show them that, you, you know, they can make a change. So that's a big part of, um, who we are, what we stand for, the things that we want to do and how we're responding. So, um, however we can help and collaborate and so forth, we're willing to do that.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Paul. Um, let, let's, let's open this up, uh, to questions and, uh, Councilwoman McCullough, this certainly. Uh, is something that you, uh, have requested and we all agree, uh, wholeheartedly with it. But I'd like to give you an opportunity, uh, to open us up. Uh, so we'll, we'll turn it over to Councilwoman McCullough.
Thank you, Mayor Bell. Well, first, I'm just so thrilled to have, um, Shannon and Nikisha here. Thank you so much for sharing your time, you are both incredibly busy humans, I know that. And, uh, this is incredibly meaningful for you to be here. Um, well, you know. The reason I wanted, you know, I wanted y'all to come and, and speak to us and let us ask questions was because, um, I believe both of you are. You know, deeply, you know, shoulder deep invested in the long-term generational work that we're talking about. That is both, you know, investigating, dismantling and rebuilding both systemic and region-specific issues. That are contributing to a culture of violence that extends beyond the shootings that we've seen, right? Extend, you know, we're, you know, Mayor Bell pointed out that I asked at one of our workshops a while back, like. What does a safe city mean? You know, what do you mean when we say that? And I think we all agree that, you know, this has all been spurred to the sense of urgency that we have because we've seen this rise in shootings. You know, we've had that kind of public gruesome horrifying violence that spurs anyone to action. But I think we all agree, any kind of violence within our city and within our society isn't acceptable. And they're all related, they're not, they don't exist in these separate little universes where. You know, teenagers shooting each other in the street is completely unrelated to domestic violence in the home, right? It's related to the housing available to that family, related to what is going on in school, related to their relationship with the police. I mean, there's, right, like, we, we know that. Um, and I think y'all know that and are privy to a lot more actual facts than we on council. And so, um, I, not to say that no one on council is privy to facts, obviously you are. Um, but just, this is a real opportunity to learn from people who, you know, like I said, are deeply, deeply invested in this. Um. And, you know, if you look at four oh nine Action Networks, um, you know, the, the main place where I know the activity to look at is on the Facebook page. And then if you look at the Center for Violence Prevention site, there's a real commonality there in terms of. Working to, um, you know, co- like collaboration, number one. And I think that that's really the key for all of this is Lamarck's Safe City Initiative can't exist in a vacuum. And we're not going to be able to implement a policy or hire a few new police officers or hire a mental health worker or, you know. X, Y, or Z, one thing that's going to fix violence. Um, so, all of that preamble aside. Um, my biggest question for both of you, and you both touched on it already, but. I want to know, you know, and we don't, you know, it's kind of that combination of we have no time to waste, but also we want to make sure we're making informed. Long-term decisions here, but. What are some of the immediate ways we could collaborate as a municipality with either the entities that you're a part of? Or something else that, that you think would be wise to address this, this problem of our city not being as safe as it should be? And there you go, just a small little question.
I'm happy to start, we can kind of go back and forth if you'd like, Ms. Paul. Uh, so for me, I think always low hanging fruit, right? Like, these are really complicated, complex, um, problems that many cities are facing, you know. Um, you know, around the US, around the world. And so for me, and especially because you have someone, and like Ms. Paul, who's already kind of part of this movement is within the schools. Uh, so I think, you know, she's already touched on mentoring and I'll let her talk on that more since she's more of an expert on mentoring than I am. But I think that's exactly right. Um, and then I also would add in these universal relationship programs. And so to your other point, um, we do know, and I'm happy to send you all, um, you know, a short policy brief. On the connection between mass violence and domestic violence. And we know that that is connected. And so these relationship programs, you know, whenever students are learning, and they do interactive learning, it's an entire semester curriculum, right? And so they're not just going to a gymnasium and being told like, don't bully your friend, right? And then like going back to class for one hour, one semester. This is an entire semester program where they are learning the difference between healthy, unhealthy and abusive relationships. I mean, it's a program that we are already doing in many, um, of the other Galveston County School Districts and Houston School Districts. Um, and, you know, it's really trying to ensure that adolescents engage in healthy relationships. So it's, again, it's universal, so you're not just targeting at-risk students, you're targeting everyone. One, because we know that most people, um, don't know how to have a good relationship, even, you know, like me. Like, no one taught me how to have a good relationship other than. other than me watching my parents, right? And so if parents get in an argument, which we all do, sometimes we don't learn that we also need to apologize in front of our kids. We get in an argument in front of our kids and then we go to our bedroom at nighttime and we apologize to each other and we make up. Well, you know, children aren't seeing how to apologize, how to engage in these healthy relationships, right? And so that's even something that, you know, we're teaching students, you know, just how to learn to say that you're sorry, right? To take responsibility for mistakes. And so that's really important. So again, that's so universally, we all could benefit. I mean, I know I could continue to benefit from a relationship program. And then it also, you know, at the same time, gets to target those at-risk students. And then what we also do is we couple it with a texting intervention. So students text the word "relationship" to 37420. You all are welcome to do it right now. And so for students who maybe aren't in school as much, come in and out of school, they're still getting these, you know, relationship programs. Now, it's not going to be as beneficial as an entire curriculum, but it at least is something, again, right, that students can start to engage in. I mean, and also it's teaching people who maybe come from abusive homes and, you know, teaching them that, like, what you're experiencing is unhealthy, it is abusive, and giving them support so that that cycle doesn't continue. Since we know, as, you know, Casey said, that, you know, larger mass violence, gang violence, all of this is, you know, going to come out of, you know, these, out of, you know, oftentimes, relationship violence, domestic violence, dating violence, interpersonal violence. So, you know, really seeing how it's all connected. And then I would also add that something that I think we all need to focus on and it's something we're working on with our center, so I can't say that we have, like, an initiative necessarily, but kind of forward-thinking is not only kind of like what we think of as traditional gang violence, like MS-13, you know, different ways like that and traditional ways of recruiting youth, but also looking at social media and the way that in particular, our white males are being recruited to extremism. And so that's another issue of violence that I think we've all seen since January. And we've been seeing it before that, but, you know, now with January, I think it's all become kind of crystal clear that that's something else that we want to be focusing on. And so again, the relationship programming is also, again, it's universal. So it's always going to be targeting all of these kids. So even students, you know, adding in lessons on how do you engage responsibly in social media? How do you learn, you know, what, you know, fact from fiction, right? Like, there are certain facts in the world and how do you engage in that? And that all becomes, you know, really important to our relationships. And so that's kind of the school-based part. I could also talk about the environment and I do want to talk about crime prevention through environmental design. But I would like to give the floor to Ms. Paul as well, since we're talking about schools.
I think I agree 100% with you, Shannon, and a lot that you said. Engagement is the biggest thing. You know, when you talk to these kids, they want to be engaged. You know, I was reading something on Talk of Lamarck just today and a young lady was talking about her daughter and she taking those kids out and how they had a conversation and the majority of them did not have dads. And so she was talking about how do you mentor these kids that don't have fathers or active fathers in the home? And a lot of our young men that are out here performing these violent acts and doing things that they just don't need to be doing, they're missing, they're missing something, whether it's a mother, whether it's a father. You wouldn't believe how many students are living with their grandparents, with their aunt. They're even living with just friends, not even blood relatives. And what happens is when they're living in these homes, you know, they've got this feeling that, you know, no one cares about them. And they, and so the men or the women on the street, their families become those street individuals. And so therefore, they react and they respond based upon those family relationships that they've made in the streets. And so you, with us in the 409 Action Network, we were trying to figure out, you know, what help do we need? So Casey, you asked, you know, what do we, what do we want? You know, I throw the question back, what are you all willing to do? Because some ideas that we have is forming some type of curriculum. We've got some really, really good individuals on the 409 Action Network, one being Diane Merchant. I don't know if you all know her. She's a longtime educator in the Galveston School. She was one of the co-founders of Mainland Preparatory Academy and curriculum instruction is her thing. And then we've also got a young man, Tyree Boyd, who, as I said, he went to the penitentiary for, I believe, I think it was 12 years. And he's out and doing a very good job. But he's since gotten his bachelor's degree, two master's degrees, and he's working on a doctorate. And so his area of study is kids and their behaviors and so forth. And so we were looking at, how do we work or collaborate with council, with your judge? And when students or when their truancy issues come up, how do we partner with you guys where we can get those students and bring them to us? Or they work with Shannon? And how do we collaborate and we figure out how we expose them and kind of give them targets? What do, what can we do to engage them in, I guess, initiatives around the city? How do we modify the reprimands that we give the students once they go to truancy court or before they go to jail? How do we get them and stop some of the things before it gets out of hand or before it moves further to where it's at? And so that's going to be a collaborative effort between all of us here. And how do we make that happen? And we need your all's help to do that. We've got the mentors and we can get more, but what can you do from a legal standpoint to help us help those students and engage them? What all are you all willing to do? Like, I see Chief Jackson is here. You know, the students, when we ask them simple questions like, what do you want? What will help you get out of trouble? I mean, these kids want to have basketball games and softball games with police officers. In order for the students and these kids and these young adults to have a different mentality, they've got to get to know the officers on the street. They've got to talk to them. They've got to trust them. I'm not going to go on a tangent of what the officer should look like. I'm talking about actual engagement. We've got to engage these students and we've got to have different types of activities that they want to do. They're different, they're a different breed, they're different kids than I was growing up. The things that they want to do, they want to have video game contests with police officers. I mean, who would think about that? But these are the things that are of interest to them. And so we've got to change our mindset. We've got to change the things that we like and look at some of the things that they like. And then therefore, see how we can engage them with more activity, get in the mentors, and then hopefully start from that level. But that's where we are, trying to get in line with their mindset and figure out where they are, what are their needs, what are they lacking? And how do we help them move past that? How do we expose them? You know, these kids, they fight with guns. In my day, they fought with their hands. And when I first got on the board in LMI SD, we used to take kids to actual prisons. We used to, we used to take, these kids are scared. They're not the same type of kid. And so, you know, what are you all willing to do to invest in some activities that will show them some things, that will expose them to some things so that we then know how to steer the boat in helping them to decrease some of the foolishness that's going on?
And I also want to jump into this as well because typically, one of the big questions is then like, okay, how do we fund this? I know that's a big question that almost every, you know, city or school district always is asking. So I will say, Galveston County is pretty fortunate that the Moody Foundation and the Kempner Foundation have been really supportive of these initiatives. So the relationship program that I discussed is part of a larger, it's called Causeway-Galveston Initiative, social-emotional learning, mentoring. There's all different pieces of it. The relationship curriculum is one piece of that. And the Moody Foundation did fund that five-year project. And exactly what Ms. Paul is saying, it's a collaboration. It's not just UTMB and the school district. It's, you know, the school district, UTMB, mental health agencies, you know, different groups of people in the community coming together. So that's one thing I want to tack on there as well, that there, you know, I think we are fortunate that there are local funders looking at this issue and willing to, you know, to kind of back it, if you want.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shannon. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Miss Titch has joined us. Welcome, Mr. Miss Titch. Let's move on now to Mr. Compey on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first, I want to say I've already registered at Text Relationship 37420. I need all the help I can get on relationships, right? And continuing to improve. And so thank you for this link to the site. I'm still trying to, I looked at, and Dr. Shannon, correct me if I'm correct in saying this, is that principally, there are three programs that are offered by the center. The four Rs, or the fourth R, as you call it, then the social media and sexting, and the healthy relationship campaign. Is that accurate?
No, so the center does, so we research many different programs. So for instance, Dr. Leela Wood, she works on domestic violence specifically. And she has actually just done a study with Harris County to look at the increase of domestic violence in Harris County since COVID and then what survivors of Harris County actually needed to get out of those relationships. And so that's, you know, one area that we focus on. And we also focus on labor studies or occupational health. And so that's one of my big drivers because if you look at reducing violence, you also want to look at paying people livable wage so that people can, you know, put food on the table, so they can live, you know, just in homes or in apartments. And then Dr. Jeff Temple, who's the director of the center, he is the one who really leads the fourth R program, the relationship program. And the texting is an initiative I started about five or so years ago that pairs with the fourth R program. And then also the crime prevention through environmental design, SEPTED. And that's something that is a collaboration between the city of Houston, the center, and HPD. So there's quite a lot of different moving parts at the center. But I was kind of at that first step, sort of talking about low-hanging fruit of relationship programming in schools could definitely be a first step. And that's something that we're pretty familiar with at the center.
So, and your role is to be both the concealer, to perhaps bring to us a toolkit, a map to build these, to follow through on the programming that you're suggesting, and then also to facilitate the discussions. Is that accurate?
So are you talking about the relationship program?
Yes, the relationship program.
Yeah, so the relationship program, what we do is that we basically start the implementation in the schools. So we provide training to the teachers and then, you know, make sure that we have administrative buy-in. And then it's the teacher, so the health teacher, who's already in the school, who would actually then teach that curriculum. And then we come in, you know, every semester, basically, and evaluate how that program is doing, ways to improve it. But it's the teachers themselves who are already in the school who are providing it, which is also a plus because that means, you know, if funding runs out somewhere, you know, you still have that curriculum, just like you would have any curriculum in any school.
And that's a goal on all of these, as I look at these programs, having a little bit of experience myself, I look to programs that will survive a cutoff of funding. How do we maintain the initiative that has started successfully, like Ms. Paul has been indicated? So that's a number one criteria is, let's not, let's not start something and we find that there's a great demand, a great need. Let's train either our community in continuing the program to get excited about it. And in this case, certainly the teachers within the school district. But more importantly, once school is out, I want a continuation of the programming through the summer months. And if we listen to the small communities, I was involved on behalf of the Red Cross in my role on the follow-up there after the Santa Fe shootings. And what was the one, number one issue that came up in that particular community was lack of activities for the youth there. And which, which in many instances, perhaps made it easier for them to look at other drug use and things of that nature to get through the boredom that they were experiencing. And that's, I think, that we need. We need to create, rebuild our community, give it a new spirit of inclusion and to make it less boring for our young people. Young people need exciting programming. Young people need our parents to also show. That's another component, by the way. Gulf Coast Interface, oh, many years ago, had a very successful parenting academy. And I'm also, and Ms. Paul knows this too, that there is a lag in terms of today, our parenting skills. I recently was just shocked, this is just an anecdotal story, but the young person was telling me about the fact that they had gone out and had a great drunk with their parents. And which just surprised me, right? That it was actually the parents that were encouraging the access to the alcoholic beverages. And so, and I think there's a component on this too, since Chief Jackson is on and I'm a former Justice of the Peace. What are the legal ramifications as well too? You know, if you're encouraging this sort of conduct on the part of your youth, there's some legal, there's some legal implications that are associated with this, with that sort of conduct and encouraging our youth to take those roads. And the last thing, yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I feel like you teed me up kind of well earlier, so I wanted to take the chance while I have it. And so the relationship programming is actually trying to be designed where there would be like an adult or a parent component. So you're already ahead of the curve of knowing that, what we're trying to do, but it doesn't exist yet. But also talking about like something for kids to do. So that's one component of the crime prevention through environmental design. So, you know, looking at vacant lots that you have and turning them into green spaces, parks, looking at the new development that starts to happen and ensuring that there's front porches, right? Instead of tall fences, you have, you know, lower shrubs, speed bumps, traffic signs. You know, what's near the school, liquor stores, different signage, you know, bike paths, walking paths, basketball courts, outdoor space, but outdoor space that's specifically designed for community. And so, you know, areas that might have high graffiti, turning that into murals. You know, so trying to think creatively about like, what are already those hot pockets? And how do we look at that from a design, from an architecture perspective as well? Which, you know, we have researched that that definitely works. I think that that also kind of hits the nail on the head as far as, you know, youth don't have something to do a lot of times because there aren't those open spaces or safe ways to get to those open spaces.
And I'm going to throw my last item that was part of some listening campaign. item that was part of some listening, a listening campaign after our unfortunate recent death in the city. The parents need to understand that they're still permitted, they're still permitted to discipline their child or their youth. And but there's, there's not the old-school way of, let me go out and cut a swig off the tree or or get the biggest belt that I can buy, some of the things that were used in my days, right? And and God knows, don't tell my daddy, because he was the best one that liked to use the belt. So but there is a way to go about discipling your child that is within the the law. And I think that I heard from some parents saying, we'd like to understand that, right? And then that there are also some access, and you have it at your your site. I saw some some links to to hotlines. I think that we're, we don't promote hotlines enough. The the suicide prevention hotline, and there was another one that was on your site that I really liked as well too, that we to make our community aware that these are available to them 24/7 as issues arise. So that that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compey on. Mr. Miss Titch?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Shannon. Funding for these organizations, what would that mean to a municipality? I I hear a lot of it being directed towards the schools. But what about municipalities? And the second question is, what other municipalities are engaging your programs right now? And I'd really like to talk with them and and see how it's working for them.
Yeah, that's a great question. So cities can absolutely still apply for funding, especially from foundations. So the City of Houston, we've worked with them in the past, and they were, you know, the the agency who received the funding. It wasn't the center. There's times that the center receives the funding, so there's different ways to go about it. So maybe if we're going for a larger, you know, like five-year NIH grant, that would typically go through the Center for Violence Prevention because of how NIH operates. And then we would partner with the city and with the school district and with, you know, the mentoring programs. And then those entities would receive, you know, the money to implement the different programs. And then the other way is, you know, for the city themselves to go for that funding or for the police department to go for that funding, or the school district to go for that funding. And then they partner with us and other groups to then implement some of these programs. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, y'all y'all charge for your services, correct?
I mean, it depends on what the service is. And so, you know, like for fourth R, for instance, you know, I'm not going to charge my time to come out there. But like the curriculum, you know, there's a cost to that curriculum. But then, once you have the curriculum, it's your curriculum. The school district owns it. So there's those kinds of costs. It really, it really depends on, you know, the extent that the city is wanting to kind of dive into this. But I think that there's always, you know, conversations to be had on, you know, how to kind of how to start and then how to fund it. And then how to, you know, to the earlier point, sustain it after funding runs out.
Certainly. Can you provide our our city manager a list and contact numbers of the municipalities that are engaged in it?
I can do that. I, it will probably be next week, if that's okay. Our director is out of town, but that's definitely something that we can do.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Can I have a second? Do you mind?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
Shannon, you touched on it, but I was really hoping you would spend a minute or two more just explaining the environmental bucket a little bit more. Because I do think, like, you know, the word environmental is, you know, a hard word. And I think, you know, and and let's try as much as we can to take like the green recycling sign off of it and like explain that it means like the place where you live.
Yes, yeah, exactly. So the environmental design is the environment in which, you know, your residents are living. And so, you know, I kind of gave a lot of different examples. And then the results of those examples, right? So, you know, even, you know, if you have, you know, somebody who works job where they don't have easy transportation, you know, bike paths to be able to get to that job, right? All of these different ways start to reduce violence. So oftentimes, or prevent, I should even say, violence. So we sometimes, you know, are thinking on the back end of, you know, once somebody has kind of already entered the justice system, what do we do to prevent further violence? And that's a conversation that definitely needs to be had. But the environmental design is looking on that front end of what can we do to prevent this violence from occurring in the first place? So we know that, you know, students who live in, you know, sustainable housing, right? That doesn't have mold on it or in it. And that, you know, is in a environment that feels safe, that is safe, that they're going to be, you know, they're going to do better in school. They're going to make it to school on time. And they're going to be, you know, if the parent has a livable wage, then, you know, the student will have food on the table. And not just food, but also, you know, hopefully, healthy food, right? And like the double snap dollars is a great example of that, of having healthy food that nourishes your brain. And all of these different factors, you know, in my world, we call it the social determinants of health. And so all of the different social, environmental, economic factors that, you know, start to play into people's health. And that's not just physical health, but also mental health. And so that becomes really important for, you know, for preventing that violence from ever happening. You know, an example that, you know, one, we haven't gotten to the implementation phase yet. But one thing that we're working on, it's a partnership between Galveston Police Department, Galveston School District, and our center. And where what happens is, and so there's, you know, this term, and it's kind of gained popularity called ACES, adverse childhood experiences. And it's been broadened of late to say adverse childhood and community experiences. And so these adverse experiences could be a child who has gone without a meal. And, you know, a child who had a parent who's incarcerated, a child who has experienced abuse or neglect. And so there's these different, you know, ACES that happen, and gun violence in their community. And what would happen is that, I'm trying not to get the technical, complicated side of it. But a police officer goes to Dean's house. And he doesn't know he's going to Dean's house. He gets a call to this address and shows up. And there has, at at the house, there's been some type of adverse event. There's been some type of violent event. Maybe it's domestic violence. Maybe it's, you know, a gunshot in the neighborhood, whatever it might be. And that police officer is going to make that report no matter what. And that police officer, no matter what, is going to check that there was a child in that house. We're not getting the child's name. All you have is the address. What then happens on the back end is that that data gets exported every evening. And so in the morning, a person who has training at the school district in social emotional learning or mental health training, all they receive is the student's ID. And in the subject, in the headline says handle with care. And so now this, you know, therapist or whoever it might be knows that Dean had an adverse event. They do not know what adverse event happened, but they know that something happened to Dean. So now when Dean shows up late to school, instead of Dean getting sent to, you know, ISS or detention or whatever it might be for like being late to school, instead that person would say, hey, Dean, like, you know, I know you're late. It happens sometimes. Do you need some breakfast, right? Don't you don't mention event. All you're doing is you're handling with care, right? You know something happened that was bad enough for the police to have to show up at their house. And so then, you can track how many times that happened. So if it happens three times in a month to Dean, then, you know, at that point, Dean is my son's name, so I'm throwing him under the bus here. But at that point, you know, Dean would then receive, you know, could then, you could then, you know, enter into some type of like deeper care for that child. So, you know, there's a mentoring program. Okay, it's happened three times. So our first step is mentoring or therapy or whatever it might be. And the reason I'm going into all of this and why it's important for violence prevention is what we also know is that students who end up in ISS, detention, get expelled from school, have to go to D A E P, whatever it might be. We know that the moment that happens, even if they're in kindergarten, their trajectory has shifted. And they are now more likely to be involved in some type of, you know, violent event in the future or some type of criminal activity, even if not violent. And so if we can, if we can start to shift that perspective where instead of saying you're late, you know, you are, you are now being shifted into this other trajectory, you know, understanding the whole child, understanding the whole environment, understanding everything that's happening. And so that's a very long-winded example of prevention, right? Like, we we won't know necessarily if Dean, you know, would have ended up in criminal behavior, you know, specifically for Dean. But we do know on a whole that children are going to end up being in that trajectory. And we also know that, you know, black and brown students get targeted the most. And so this is another way to try to reduce, you know, that that problem in schools.
Thank you, Dr. Shannon. I have a few questions for you. And so I I'd like to begin with the universal relationship program. So my my first question is, what is the success rate of that program, if there is such a thing?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I do not have the stats pulled up in my brain right now, but the success rate, and it it has been shown to be successful. And I will say it's also been shown, so the fourth R was not created by the center. It was started in Canada. And Jeff Temple is the one who brought it to the States first, and it's in Texas. And it's continuously, again, being evaluated. And we have, you know, grants through the NIH and the CDC to continue researching it, making it better, evaluating it. But it is an evidence-based program. And as far as, you know, relationship violence prevention programming goes, it is kind of cream of the crop, if you will, when it comes to being evidence-based and showing success for students. And then the texting initiative that's kind of part of that, and we have feasibility studies on the texting project. So we know that students like it. We know that students will engage. They'll opt into it. Rarely will students opt out. And we have higher numbers than like national averages for texting for SMS campaigns. And we're currently looking at the efficacy of, does it shift how students change their relationship? So that's something that I, it's, the texting program isn't evidence-based yet, but we're also not implementing the texting program on its own. It's kind of like a booster, if you will, to the relationship programming, which is sort of like the gold star.
Okay. So you so you said that you believe the program is successful, but you can certainly get back to us with that, correct?
Definitely, absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So let let me drill down a little bit. And of course, I know you don't have the stats in front of you, but just if if in your experience. So then my next question, as it relates to the first question is, is there a difference in success rate in different communities? Would 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 this community perhaps have a different success rate than that community? If so, what have you found to be the determining factors between the different success rates?
It's a really good question. So there could be. And but what we've done to mitigate that is that the program can be tailored specifically for communities, right? So this is just, you know, a very large example. It was originally developed in Canada. And so a lot of the, you know, they talked about hockey all the time, right? Or in Texas, and that's not something that's going to be, you know, as big of a draw. And so we changed that to football, right? And so we talk about the ways and, you know, and you're using football as a larger example, you know, to to draw different, you know, conclusions about relationships and such. And so those are kind of small examples of how you can kind of shift it depending on the community. But as a whole, it's based on the psychology of children and youth and what children and youth as a whole, you know, really need to have healthy and healthy and abusive relationships. And so whether you use football or hockey, you know, the base of it is the same. It's more about how do you engage students to kind of to care about it? And so in Galveston, for instance, we had the media team at Ball High actually create the videos that they watch so that they were then more engaged in it because it was their peers who were, you know, talking about these different scenarios that they might get in. But the research of it stays the same across populations.
My gosh, I can totally picture our U I L winning drama team participating in video production like that. Just a little plug for.
One of the things that that I've been looking at is this trauma that is related to the dysfunction of the family unit, especially and particularly in in our community. So I've learned that a lot of the the issues that our children are facing are issues of trauma. No dad in the home, no mom in the home, poverty, dysfunctional, you said it earlier, relationships, low self-esteem, and a whole host of issues. Some of them, we might be able to to help mitigate. Others of them will be dependent upon their their family unit and how how the unit can heal. So do you have programs within your work group that would help us speak to the trauma that many of our children and many of our families carry around with them that more times than not find themselves being manifested in violent and criminal behavior?
Yeah, that's a really good point. And so we actually received funding from the Simmons Foundation about four years ago to do exactly what you're talking about. And so we took the relationship programming, and then we looked at every single lesson. And instead of putting in like one lesson on trauma, and we did, we basically made sure that every, you know, lesson throughout the entire semester was, you know, what we would call trauma-informed. So it was, so that's also teaching the teachers how to, you know, so there's a teacher manual in the student books, right, as is typical. And then so, you know, in that teacher manual, you know, if a student has experienced this or is acting this way, you know, instead of thinking that they're withdrawing or not caring, you know, these are different ways that you could, you know, instead of sending them to the principal, can you send them to the counselor, right? Something like that. Or talk to them after class, ask them to stay back five minutes. So that's the trauma-informed part of it, but exactly what you're talking about. And the curriculum definitely addresses that trauma. And, you know, it's a, you know, it's, what's great about it, you know, in in my, not just opinion, research-based opinion, is that it's not just targeting one adverse event. So it's not just targeting poverty, or it's not just targeting, you know, a family member being out of the house or possible abuse or neglect or even bullying, cyberbullying. The curriculum is looking at all of this, which research has proven. It's like, it's a dose effect. So you could think of it in the same way. You know, if the doctor gives you the antibiotics, you want to take all of the antibiotics until they're gone, not just until you feel better, right? And so this curriculum, it's, you know, it's that dose effect. So, you know, receiving one dose, yes, that's great. Receiving, you know, bullying, you know, interventions is wonderful, but Receiving, you know, bullying, you know, interventions is wonderful, but that on its own, you know, isn't as likely, evidence points out, to curb bullying. So what you need is that dose effect. And so getting an entire semester on bullying, on healthy relationships, on all of these different factors, you know, on media, social media, and how to engage with it, all of it together is that dose effect of, I think, what you're talking about. So, you know, it's looking at it as a whole. And then there's also something, so, and this goes to a point earlier about summer or even after school, there's something called H R P P, so it's Healthy Relationship Programming Plus. And so that would be, you know, after a student, you know, has gone through the relationship programming, or maybe, you know, we don't catch that student quite on the prevention side that we want to and maybe have already made it to D A E P or something like that. You then implement H R P P, which is much more directed and focused on some of these at-risk behaviors. It's not as universal. But, you know, again, you wouldn't implement H R P P in the entire school. That would be, you know, for specific causes and reasons. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, ma'am, it does, thank you. I have a, a, along those lines, and I'd like to ask Ms. Paul this question. Certainly, she's been a school board member for, for years, and she's dealt with many of the parents of our community. And so, Ms. Paul, would you speak to us about the family dysfunction that, that you have experienced as a leader of families in our community? And, and how that translates into the particip- participation or lack thereof of the entire family unit in the educational process?
Well, I think we have, we have a great amount of dysfunction. We have a great amount of, of a lack of engagement for parents and their children in the entire unit. And I think that we have a lack of engagement from, from a lot of necessary and appropriate parties in trying to make it happen. I, I think we, we don't, we don't have it, and we've got to figure out how to do it so that it can be participatory in however we see fit. But, but, but there, there's, there's a great lack, there's a great lack. And I think with the, the merging of the schools, we, we've tried to do some things, but we're not there yet. We're not there. And so I think that whatever we can figure out with us in this group here and the collaboration and with Shannon's help, we need it, we need it. So did that answer your question? Kind of, not really?
No, no, you, you, you hit the nail on the head. And I, you, you and I talk a lot about the things that you try to do to get parents involved, to get them to participate. And so I wanted to bring that out because I believe that there's, that that's a direct result of the trauma that has been experienced in, in our community. And the fact that that trauma has not been addressed. And it can be anything from, from economic opportunities, educational opportunities, right? To, to some of the, some of the more creative things that we can do in our criminal justice system. Speaking of what, what Dr. Shannon just spoke to, the idea that instead of, of us punishing a, a child for issues that are beyond their control, you know, you know, maybe, maybe we, we go differently at them, you know, with, with an idea to support them through. But I, I already suspected that, you know, that's what you were going to say, but I wanted to get this out. Yes, ma'am.
Can I also just commend you real quick? Because I think that's something that gets lost a lot, is that trauma. And I'm really glad that you brought that up. And, you know, one of the aces that, you know, we talk about is, you know, when we say family incarceration, it's not just family incarceration. It could be having a parent who's divorced. You know, all of these different factors, but a parent separation is actually a huge, a huge factor in all of this. So I just wanted to, to kind of give my, like, amen to that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank, thank you, Dr. Shannon. We're getting ready to go to our second round of questioning. Perhaps council members have, in this discussion, formed more, more questions or commentary. And so we'll start again with Councilwoman McCollum.
All right. So, ma'am, first off, oh, this is some good stuff. This is some really good stuff. And I feel like there is the, not only the desire, but the momentum and the resources and the will to make some things happen. And I just can't thank both of you enough, Shannon and Nikisha, for like coming with concrete recommendations, you know, like that's, whoa, woman, feeling good. Okay, so, um, basically, I guess my, after listening to everybody, I've been taking notes about, you know, about not only the low-hanging fruit and the things that maybe we could take action on immediately and sort of pulling from things that both of you said, but also sort of keeping that extra bucket of, how could we make sure we continue this relationship so that as we're, you know, harvesting that low-hanging fruit, we are setting steps for the future? And I want to know, I want you to just gut check me and see if I have the right end of the stick here. So, and some other metaphor that I'm sure I'll come up with. So if I heard everything right, some things we could do immediately would be to implement the four R curriculum throughout Texas City I S D. That would be in collaboration with UTMB and the I S D, obviously. There's a lot of questions for us as a municipality, for Tink and all of us, to figure out how we support that, obviously, because we, as the municipality, don't have control over that. But hello, Nikisha, she's here, and she's an important key personnel for that. So that's the first one that sounds very key. Rolled up in that is the texting outreach, social media education, a lot of stuff. But I'm just going to call all of that the four R curriculum. I'm wondering if sort of included in that would be a way to connect kids who get, connect kids to mentors through the 409 Action Network. Seems to me like there, that wouldn't be too difficult to find a way to identify the kids who are most in need of mentorship and connect them that way, right? Then something that, oh, man, Nikisha, that you said that, you know, you asked us, you know, how far is the city willing to go in terms of what are, and I, and I'm, in my head, what, what you said earlier about how can our municipal court handle things differently? Truancy, when kids are, you know, put before the court, even within the school district? When, you know, how can we handle that? All of that, to me, I'm bundling in my head with this Handle With Care protocol that Shannon mentioned. That's, I mean, those are all the same approach, right, to the manifestation of much bigger things that are showing up in kids being late or acting out, right? So for me, that's, that's number two. This, like, the Handle With Care protocol and how it extends to not only, or basically a partnership between the city, the P D, and the court, and the I S D, and UTMB, and 409 Action Network. And so those are the two, like, immediate ones that, that make the most sense to me. Things that we could start to take action on, we could start to brainstorm how we fund, what, in what ways we fund, what do we pursue? Obviously, there's a lot more conversations to come. And then, okay, so first I'll pause. Does that sound right? Does that sound, maybe not right, but does that sound like I have the right end of the stick to y'all?
Yes.
Okay. And then, you know, obviously, the environmental portion. And Shannon, what's that word you keep saying? It sounds like it's an acronym.
STEP TEN, yeah. So that stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Is the acronym, yeah.
Okay. And immediately forgot that, okay. So that one seems to be the one that's most, like, that's such a big bite to chew on. But basically, it's, it's, I mean, it's everything, right? It's the life we help craft, the space we, for people to live. My question for you is, what can the Center for Violence Prevention do in that arena to support us in starting to address those kinds of issues?
So this would go to a question earlier about funding. So something that large scale would need to be, you know, I think, funded by a pretty large entity because you're not just looking at one thing, right? You're looking at the entire environment from speed bumps, right, to housing and parks and green space. And so that's something that we could, you know, help assist on as far as, you know, making sure the right partners are being pulled in and, you know, helping write a grant and evaluating it with you all. You know, Jeff has gone on, you know, rides with the H P D so that, you know, they, you can, kind of the two perspectives of like, these are the hotspot areas. And then, you know, from the research perspective, like, these are the ways in which it could be prevented, crime could be prevented through environmental design. So there's, you know, the evaluation component of it. But in, you know, obviously assisting with funding, but that's definitely something that I think the city, school district, police department, and whatever other entities would need to kind of come together to decide, like, yes, we want to move forward with this and that long-term.
Right, that's that long-term track, okay. And what about, I'll turn, you know, alternatively, the, the low-hanging fruit education bucket? If we were, those two things I mentioned, like, if, if, if Lamarck is interested in finding a way to support implementing the four R curriculum in our I S D and also getting in on this sort of new idea of Handle With Care protocol and what that means? What does that mean? How do we move forward? Again, funding, you know, like, what, what does that mean to, like, work with you guys and work with 409 Action Network too?
Yeah, I think it's definitely important to, you know, for like Nikisha and I to think about that collaboratively as well because that mentorship is a huge, a huge piece of that too. And, you know, it, it would really start with those discussions with the school district, I think. Trying to figure out, like, where are people and trying, what are people willing to put money towards as well? That maybe, it could be existing dollars that are already there. But, you know, there, there will be, you know, some type of funding aspect to it, but that, that money could already be in place. I don't, I, I don't know the budget. You know, or it could be, you know, a smaller grant that, you know, we all, you know, write and go for that, you know, wouldn't take as long to, to fund or implement as something as big as like an environmental change. But yeah, I think those are conversations just to kind of start to enter into, which I know doesn't give the perfect answer right now, but.
Yeah, no, that's what I wanted, okay.
I, I, I agree with her. It is a conversation, if we're going to have to dialogue with school board, bring in the superintendent, some discussions with the cabinet. I know with House Bill three, with mental health, there's a little bit of funding there also. So there may be something there, but, you know, getting, getting on the agenda or us just, just getting with superintendent and having a sit-down meeting. Shannon, you know, come on down and let's meet and talk about it and discuss. Of course, we would have to have an M O U on the table that we would have to create and bring it forth to the entire school board, you know, so that we could vote on how we move. But I, I think that a conversation could happen very soon. I think that we can talk to, I can talk to the superintendent. We can all talk, Shannon, we can talk as well, get her involved, let's have a meeting all together and then move forward. And, you know, this is, this is planning time. You know, we're, we're doing teachers' contracts. We're going to start adopting a budget this summer. So this is good planning time to bring forth a meeting for us all to talk about it and see where we stand and when we can begin. So the time is now. I mean, right now is, is good planning time for us in the school district, for sure.
I second that.
Okay, cool. And then, if I may, I'd like, this might be a question for Tink, I suppose, or maybe you, Mayor Bell, because you also know more about this than me. But, you know, what are our limitations or our capacities as, as a municipality to support this effort beyond, you know, providing direction when it comes to, you know, our own staff and, and personnel? But, you know, we can't implement something at the I S D, right? I'm acutely aware of that. So, but how do, what are the ways we can support that, that you can think of?
Well, fir- first, you know, we're, we're going to have, I mean, there's going to have to be a, a scope for the project because not only do you have to remember, I mean, there, there's a bunch of other issues that come up there too. Because is it through the entire Texas City Independent School District? Because if it is, the majority of those students are not Lamarck students. They're, you know, they're from Texas City. So there's an issue there. We have other school districts in our city as well that, you know, if we support a program in one school, then they're going to expect support of a program in, in their schools too. So we're, I'm going to have to really flesh out the scope of this and see, see how it's going to fit before we can even begin to talk about that. Now, as far as supporting a program in the school, and if it's, if it's a direct impact on our students, I don't think there's any problem, any problem with that from a budgetary standpoint. Not, not, not any problem doing it legally, finding the money, that's a different story. But, you know, doing it legally, that, I don't, I don't see an issue with that. I think Dara would agree with that.
Okay. So, so am I right in saying that, like, the biggest things to chew off there first are, how do we make sure we're not addressing just one portion of our students? It has to be a conversation about all of our I S Ds that serve the city? And then?
Well, I, I don't know, but, I mean, if, if it's going to be in Lamarck High School and Lamarck Elementary and the middle school that services the, the students of Lamarck only, and that's the part of the Texas City Independent School District that, that is going to be, where the program is going to be, that's a little bit of a different story than if it's going to be in every high school, every junior high, every elementary. I, I think at that, that point, we would have, you know, we may have some citizens say, wait a minute, why are we paying? You know, why is Texas City not participating in this? And Texas City may want to partner in this. I mean, I think that's, that's, there's somebody needs to be at this table. While we're talking about this, because I, I could see them having the same vested interest in doing something like this that we have, or at least they should. So I think there's some more conversations that have to happen in that. But once we set that framework, then I think we, we could figure out where to go next.
Okay.
You know, you can always use the word pilot, since this is our first time doing it. To try, we want to try it. And, you know, Shannon and all of us, we can come up with statistics and, and, and have a target, a target. And if we use the word pilot, I think it will kind of give everyone a little bit of, oh, okay, I understand. And then once we evaluate at the end, then you can open it up to a bigger scope. But normally, if you use piloting, people don't have too much of an, an issue.
I would agree with that, and I would agree that it's more just logistical, logistically feasible to do a pilot as well. So, you know, like with Galveston Independent School District, we didn't start in every single school. And we're still building up on year three, you know, to still do that. And so we started in the high school, then, you know, we're able to add middle schools. And then, you know, eventually we'll be adding elementary schools. But that's also, it's that slow movement as well, which, you know, both logistically, but also a way to make sure it's part of the culture and not something that just gets kind of dumped in and then it doesn't work and it gets taken out.
Right on. Oh, thanks, guys. Okay, I'm done, Mayor Bell, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Copián.
I want to make sure the, our, our record, just speaking in plain English for our, for our residents, we've talked about, and, and Dr. Shannon, you, you have used this word, and our Community Action Council uses this word, this concept of, for, for residents, the social determination, determinants of health. There are, there are five principal pockets that we talk about when we talk about things that impact our health. And I think we wake up every morning and we want to live to be a hundred years old. Or I, I correct myself. What is the gentleman that just celebrated Tink a hundred and eleven years?
Yes, Mr. Melvin Campbell.
Mr. Melvin Campbell, happy birthday to him. And we all want to be a Mr. Melvin Campbell and live a hundred and eleven years and beyond. And we, God bless him. Tink's saying, no, well, as long as we can walk like Mr. Campbell and stuff, so.
Handsome as Melvin, maybe.
We have the social determinants of health, and I want our, our residents. We have the social determinants of health and I want our, our residents to understand that there are these pockets. And we've been focusing on education. That's, um, part of this discussion with, with our school board president here, Nikisha. And, um, and so that's one pocket. And then we have another pocket that's, that's healthcare. What happens when we do get sick? What happens when we are scared about COVID and how do we get a COVID shot? All these things impact of, impact our health. We want to make sure our community has access to that or have a COVID test for that matter. And, um, and then we look for jobs. That's the great, uh. Project that's being, and you see the dirt turning there along I forty-five of economic stability, living wage jobs. Uh, jobs that, um, keep our citizens and our community here close to home. And, um, and then we talk about the social and the community context of these. Things that impact our health, you know, our, our, our churches, our other community organizations, our nonprofits. Um, other, other, like the 401 Action Network, other collaborations, all of these have an impact. And ultimately, perhaps in our mental health and how we're able to communicate and live together in, 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 in our area. And then, of course, that fifth pocket for our residents is to understand that there's an impact upon improving our neighborhoods and our environment. Uh, we're having some discussion about that right now, right? We've got, um. Issues related to people who don't obey speed limits right now, and that's causing some problems with regard to. Uh, endangering the lives of people that are walking and using our streets. Uh, uh, I, I was yesterday, uh, a victim of just that as well too, not as severe as some of our youth that have lost. Their lives or, or, uh, been injured and, um, but, um, a person speeding down the road. Uh, seeing a young person on a bicycle, immediately lost control and rammed into my car parked in the front there. And it didn't bother to stop and just headed on down the road. And, um, fortunately he was found, but these are all issues of improving our neighborhood and our environment, and I think. This is a beginning. Let me suggest, having said this, all these different pockets. That I think that, um, we perhaps. Need to convene, there are many nonprofits already involved in addressing individual pockets. They also have access to individual funding that perhaps could, could assist in this effort as we build up. Let's call it a pilot program. And, uh, let's also remember, um. Nikisha, that if we can find a support from our high school principal at Lamarck High School or. Or the middle school or, or the elementary school that, um, and I say this as a board member of our educational foundation. We have funding there, uh, as well too, that can help support and kick off these projects. But ultimately, all of these things, in my mind, are building a better, a stronger Lamarck. We need to get rid of this impression that is so idiotic. I want to go on, say, say it just quite frankly, it's stupid. We have, um, we have a ongoing problem of stupidity. And that stupidity is considering people and those of us that live in Lamarck and decide. I just stay and fight for a community to be crazy. I don't feel that I'm crazy. I feel that I'm part of a wonderful community of people that care for each other. And I want to get rid of this impression once and for all, that we live in a city full of thugs. I'm not a thug and neither are my neighbors and neither are the kids that go to school. And, uh, so, and, and, and none of our municipal workers, people, we are all caring individuals. And I hope that we're able to collaborate with many other organizations to kick off this, this effort.
Thank you, Mr. Compeon. Yes, sir. Mr. Missage.
Yes, sir. Um, I don't have any questions, but I have a kind of a follow-up statement. Uh, similar to, and echoes on what Joe just said. About our environment. It, yes, it's the schools, but it's in, it's in every school and different school districts are run different ways. But our environment here, uh. Roads, speeding, uh, whether we have speed bumps or not, I think they're appropriate in some areas. I think we make decisions based on liability and we're afraid of things, and I think that's the wrong way to go. If we need something like that to control it, then we can post it. And if somebody can't control their car and they still can damage a car on a speed bump, then they deserve that damage. And I'll say that straight up. Our children don't deserve to get hit. Uh, so I'm in favor of those things where they are necessary. Uh, street lighting is another thing. And, and. And Ms. Paul, I know you know this. But we still see so many of our children. And, and we've got to get them now. We're, we're talking a generation. We've got to get them early. They, they don't read well. And when they go to these job applications and I'm speaking from personal experience with applicants. Uh, when we were in massive hiring and we would. Have to come in and assist HR. It was mind boggling, the, the numbers, and I'm, I'm going to say it was well more than sixty percent. And, and if they can't do those basic aptitude tests. Then we're missing the boat. And that may also be something as a training curriculum for an. A one semester deal. Uh, as far as what you're gonna find. In the real world and, and how, and sample tests and everything that we've got to get them there. Because if they miss that job, if they go to Amazon and they miss that job. And they can be a good person and have a great work ethic, but if they miss that one. That could be the turning point where. They'd go the other way. And, and that's where we, we don't want to lose them. So. I think we're all willing to support. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, uh, uh, Councilman Missage. Dr. Shannon. I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if you and your team have the experience. Uh, of working with different entities to generate a plan for implementation to address. The issues that we've discussed tonight. Are you, are you and your folks capable? Uh, if, if. You have the partner. If, if you have the resources, are you capable of putting together a comprehensive program? Uh, because the issues that we face in our city and, and in our community go far beyond issues of relationship. Issues of understanding relationships with, with our students. It goes far beyond. The issue that, that we've spoke about today and it, it, it reaches. Uh, into other areas, uh, areas of, of economic opportunity. Uh, prosperity. Uh, it goes into, uh, areas where, where many of our community members. Are, are victims of poverty. Uh, uh, this family dysfunction. Uh, there's so many different areas that this, uh, that, that the issue that we face today. Uh, that, that, uh, are the culprit. Um, can you and your team, uh, put together a program, a plan? That we would, uh, be able to follow, whether it's just the city of Lamarck or it's. Lamarck and the TCISB or Lamarck and the city of Texas City and TCISB. Whatever it looks like, are you guys available, uh, and able to put together a comprehensive program? To help us move forward, uh, in the, in the way that we would, we would want our community to go.
Uh, so the short answer is yes. The long answer is, um, I think the most pragmatic. And strategic way to do that is to, you know, collaborate through a grant. Um, because in that writing of the grant, you're going to have to list, like. This is our five-year plan on like what we are going to hit, where we're going to target. These are our partners, we've got letters of support. You know, start getting those MOUs together. And so just the grant writing process oftentimes starts to, you know. Almost create like a strategic plan in a way. Um, and then it also helps fund these initiatives through a funding stream. Um, that, you know, the initiatives would then be sustainable past the funding period. Um, so what, you know, I think moving forward is we would want to say, okay, what's, you know, what's? A grant that we can go for, um, together? And whether that money goes to the city and, you know, the center, you know, works with you all, or if it goes to the center and we collaborate with you all, you know. Either way, whatever makes more sense for you and for the grant, um, or the funding agency, we're fine with. Um, but, um, you know, so I think that's the short and long answer. Yes, it can definitely happen, but the most successful programs that we've done with. Cities, um, or school districts has been, um, you know, by getting that long-term grant funding. Um, where it can, you know, get kicked off. Um, and it's, you know, something that we all have kind of sunk our teeth into. Um. So I guess the next question would be, who wants to be part of that process on your side? And, and I would also encourage people, we have a group, Casey has come to it at times called Aces to Assets. It's the Aces to Assets Collaborative. And, and that is different community partners from different agencies, nonprofits, city government. Who come together to discuss some of these issues. And so that's also, I don't think that's the solution, but I think that's just another opportunity for people to hear. What's happening and to hear the different collaborations that can, um, that can come together. But I would say to answer your question. Let's find the money.
Okay, okay. I'm on board with finding the money. Let me ask you, will we be able to incorporate our community? Because, because. I am a firm believer that, that whatever we do. Has to be not only, not only supported, but driven by our community members. And so just yes or no? Would we be able to fully engage our community?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah.
Next question. Would we be able to fully engage and invite nonprofits to this?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Let me say this and then, and then I'll, I'll, I'll go back to, to where I, I was originally heading. Uh, but I, I don't want to leave out this, 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 uh, experience that we've had with, uh, speed control in our community. Uh, it's important that we understand that, uh, our council has decided that our city will be a safe city. And that means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. In fact, the reason that you're here tonight and Ms. Paul is here tonight is because. Councilwoman McCollus wanted us to bring clarity to what that actually means for us as a council and as a community. One of the areas that, uh. That, that it speaks to for me is, is the safety of our children. Uh, and, uh, we've had a couple of incidents here recently where, uh, where folks. Uh, have, have been involved in auto pedestrian accidents. Uh, one of our young people, uh, succumbed to his injuries. Uh, he was funeralized here recently. Uh, certainly there's been another incident that, that has happened, uh, within the last couple of days. Uh, and there has been a discussion on speed control. There are all sorts of ways to control speed from speed bump. Uh, to flashing lights, uh, traffic, uh, uh, signs. Uh, and it, it, it just spans the spectrum of opportunities. Uh, but let me, uh, also share the sentiments of, of, of Councilman Missage. Uh, that if it ultimately means that our children are safe. Uh, if that means, uh, that we need to work with our, uh, community to install speed bumps. Uh, then ultimately that's what will have to happen. Now, there are all sorts of other opportunities before we get to speed bump. Uh, that we might be able to take advantage of, but I'm with, uh, Councilman Missage and I'm also with. Uh, Councilman Compeon and I'm sure with Councilwoman McCollus, that the primary goal. Uh, as it relates to the control of speed is to keep our children and our families safe. Uh, in our community. And so we want to let, uh, the community know. Uh, that we will do everything in our power to make that happen, uh, even if it means. Uh, that we have to entertain in a serious way installing speed bumps. Uh, that has nothing to do with, with where I'm trying to bring, uh, this discussion to. But it has everything to do with what our community members expect from us and they expect us to. To share with them what our thoughts are on the things that they're thinking about. And today. Uh, and, and this week, they've been thinking about keeping their children safe from feeders in residential areas. So I want to let them know, uh, I for one, and you've heard from several council members, uh, we're willing to do whatever we need to do. Uh, to make sure that our children can cross the street, uh, without, uh, having to pay for it with their life or with their safety. Now, uh, let me, let me bring my portion of it, uh, into the barn. I would like, uh, to. Uh, have a, a, a meeting. Uh, with, with yourself, uh, with Ms. Paul, with our superintendent, with our city manager. Uh, if they, if we can bring another council member into that discussion, I, I would love to, but I would also. Uh, like to invite, uh, Mayor Johnson, uh, as well as their city administrator. Uh, so that we can begin this process. Of, of moving to a place that we can actually start to write these things down. So that we can come up with different, uh, different planning, uh, aspects. So that we can bring this back to this council, to the school, uh, district, to the city of Texas City, so that we might buy into this. Write grants for this, have the government help us with this from a fiscal perspective. Because what we're doing here, the work that we're about to, to embark on is important, not only for, for, uh, the Texas City and Lamarck communities. But if we do this right, right? Uh, and, and we, and we, we achieve the results that we anticipate achieving. This is a program that, that will be valuable for communities all across our country. Uh, and so it's important for us to be able to do this work. Uh, and I believe it's important enough for the government to be able to fund this work. Uh, so if you are willing, uh, to engage on that level, if, and it sounds like Ms. Paul is as well. Uh, I believe Tink is. Um, how about we move forward with planning a meeting? Uh, and I'm, I'm directing this to Mr. Jackson. How about we move forward with planning a meeting with the, uh, with all of the parties that I just. Uh, that I just, uh, uh, acknowledged, uh, to see how we can move forward.
Can I add that, um, I, that I think maybe, um, someone from the municipal court and the PD be there? Just to keep them looped in at the beginning.
Ab- absolutely. I don't have a problem with that. Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir.
How are you feeling about that?
I'm good. I'm writing all these names down.
Okay.
Dr. Shannon, uh, I mean, the first, starting off, do you think it's, it's important? Um, I, I was just thinking, if we pull in municipal court and the PD, then we need to pull in T, uh, Texas City's municipal court and the PD. And do we, I mean, at the first one of these, do we want to try to keep it as a smaller, higher level group and then start to go out, or do you want everybody? In the room at the first meeting?
Um, so typically it works better if whenever you have that larger meeting, you have a plan that people can then. Mark up, say like, this makes sense, this, this will never work, we've tried this, this looks great. Um. And so I would say before that bigger meeting, even if it's like a one-page. You know, like, I would call it specific aims in my world, but objectives, goals, five-year plan, ten-year plan, whatever you all are thinking. Um, so that could be a meeting with me and, you know, whoever else, um. You know, Ms. Paul, whoever else needs to be part of that smaller conversation. Um, and then I think from there you start to bring in all of the partners, definitely.
So maybe the first meeting is not all those extra players and it is the. Coming together of the, of the key players, taking out the municipal court, taking out the PD, like I just said, and that's where. The aim of that meeting is to create the aims.
Yeah, or it could even be instead of a, I mean, you could have a meeting or it could be. Yeah, or it could even be instead of a, I mean, you could have a meeting or it could be, you know, I send you all a draft of what I think this meeting, you know, was kind of trying to target, um, you know, what different people have said are important to them, what they've said their constituents have talked about. Um, and then from there it's, you know, track changes on a Word document. And, you know, that's how some people work, that's how I work really well. And if other people work better with meetings, um, you know, we can do that as well. But I think sometimes just getting things on paper and everyone starting to give input is usually a good way to, to start moving.
Right. And Mayor Councilwoman Call, the reason I brought that up is because we started doing that well, so we need to bring in the, the Galveston County Sheriff's Office, because they're the resource officers at the schools. Uh, we need to bring in JP three. I mean, that, there would be a lot more, just if we say, let's bring in police or let's bring in municipal court. There's a lot of other people that have to be brought in at the same time.
You're totally right to say that. Well, I like, I, I personally, and I know this is not up to me, but I like what Shannon just, you know, offered up. Um, you know, the process we went through for the, um, recent mental health grant for the PD and for first responders, y'all, that's how we did that was putting together a document, you know, the key people from the different organizations weighing in on that. And then in this case, it would be coming up with a one-page brief of like what it is that we're going for, what's the timeline? And then having that meeting with everybody, that would be sort of that coming together that Keith was talking about originally. That makes sense to me, but I don't know, Mayor Bell, does that hit what you were trying to get at?
Uh, I, it, 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 it can be done in, in, uh, various ways. I'm not married to, to one way or the other. But the goal is to initially get the, the, the city managers and the, um, representatives of the elected officials, uh, together to, uh, clearly decide that, uh, we want to define the scope of, of the project and then moving forward, uh, in that way. So if that looks like, uh, we do it electronically, uh, that looks like we do it in person, it doesn't matter to me. I just want to make sure that, that, uh, we have this discussion so that we can have a meeting of the minds before we move forward.
Yeah, and I would agree. I think you know your community better and you know the players better and what they, um, would prefer. And so we can, we can move however you all think is best as well.
So Mayor, are you okay with that? If I schedule or more start working on schedule on a meeting that would include you and me from the city, uh, Miss Paul and the superintendent from the schools, uh, Mayor Johnson and the new Texas City Administrator and Dr. Shannon?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Does anybody, anybody else have any other questions, uh, for Miss Shannon or Miss Paul? Hearing none, ladies, uh, you're welcome, uh, to listen to the rest of our meeting. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Jackson will probably report on some of the immediate safe city initiatives that we requested, uh, in the last couple of months. And then we'll have a very exciting discussion about filling appointments to our boards and commissions. Uh, and I, I know you don't want to miss that, but perhaps you have other things that you need to do. And so if you do, we won't feel, uh, we won't feel bad if you have to leave.
Thank you so much, y'all. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you all so much, and thank you for, um, you know, caring enough about this issue to not just talk about it, but to start implementing change.
I agree. Thank you all for having us. Very productive meeting. I look forward to meeting with you all soon.
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you ladies.
Take care.
Mr. Jackson, uh, do you have, uh, an update on the implementation of those nine, uh, recommendations that council gave? I believe it was our February meeting?
Uh, it was actually January nineteenth.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I have a bunch of, a bunch of notes here on all this that, if you would like, I will just read through, uh, where we're at, what we've got going. Um, and then afterwards, I guess if anybody has any questions or comments, we'll come back for questions and comments. Will that work?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so from the council members, what I had on my list of items to consider, well, the first item, I, 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 we have not addressed anything yet because the first item was, was, was the question of whether we needed a consultant to guide the safe city and that initiate initiative planning process. And there was, the council was undecided at that point, so we just, we left that one alone. Uh, Councilman Compiun, I had two, uh, items that he had brought up. Uh, the first one was working with Sister Cities to continue addressing the violent crime issue and possibly looking at, uh, HGAC and other opportunities for grants. And then, um, wanting to make sure that the city manager's office was more out in the community. Uh, the notes that I have for that, Chief Jackson's already, uh, proposed formation of a Galveston County Task Force between the departments, and that was actually the day before our, our first meeting on the nineteenth. Uh, Galveston County Sheriff's Office of Leek City said that they were on board. But the other cities, uh, uh, but his comment was the other cities must agree to participate for this to really work. One of the action items we have on this is that council could pass a resolution asking for the other cities to require their departments to participate, um, uh, in that, and, and as an outreach method to let them know, um, that we really want to see this thing move forward. Um, and then on the second one with, uh, people with the, all the staff in this office being more out in the community, uh, we've been, we've been out in the community, remain out of the community. We're, we're getting out as much as we possibly can. Uh, Mr. Mischitch had two, uh, items that he brought up was the Neighborhood Watch Program and Training for the Neighborhood Watch Program captains. Um, there was an initial meeting, I believe, for the Neighborhood Watch Program on one nineteen of twenty-one, uh, where the group attempting to reform the program, uh, Mr. Jordan attended that meeting. Uh, the police department is waiting for a finalization of the groups. At that point, the PD will become involved in their groups. PD has officers already assigned for these roles. Um, and there'd been a question about whether they were compensated or not compensated when they participated. And the chief said that they've always been compensated for their time. Uh, and then the training of the Neighborhood Watch Programs, uh, the officers are ready to work with them on the training. And Mr. Jordan's been working on some other stuff with the training. Uh, we're waiting on a list of captains, uh, block captains to start working on that. And I believe there's another meeting tomorrow evening, or at Thursday evening, that the mayor and Mr. Jordan will be attending to see how we've come along with that. Um, schedule the workshop with UTMB and the four-nine Action Network to get expert advice. We just took care of that. Um, there's, there were some questions from, um, council at the last meeting of establishing, uh, some opportunities for council members to learn more about the, uh, Neighborhood Watch Program. Mr. Jordan has been designated as a co of that program and has been trying to answer any questions that have come in related to that. Um, and continues to work on that. Um, streetlights, we talked about streetlights quite a bit, a couple of items that we came up with after the deal was one. Uh, as far as we know, there's not an existing map of the streetlights that we have in the city right now. So Mr. Jordan's been working with, uh, Chase and Den to see if we can get that map put together so we could see where they're at and start to, uh, keep track of the locations and look for the quote unquote dark spots within the city. Uh, they've also been in contact with the electric companies working on costs. Uh, we have some information related to the cost, but, uh, we're going to have to determine, uh, we can't get a set price because, um, basically if we want a streetlight added on a pole that has a transformer, they're not going to charge us anything, uh, except for the cost of running that light in the future. If there's not a pole in place and they have to set poles and run, run, uh, lines to it, then we do have to pay for the installation costs. So then it will depend on whether it's one pole to get to where the light needs to be, or two poles, or three, or whatever that distance is. So we can't get a really good estimate of what cost will be until we determine where, uh, what the locations are that we're looking at, and they have a chance to go out and look at, at those locations and tell us what they would, uh, have to do to actually get a light on, uh, in that, to get a light installed in that location. Uh, but the important thing to remember out of that is if we have a pole with a transformer already, um, there is no cost to install it. So that'll be one of the things that we can look at early on as we start looking at new locations for lights, is if we do have poles in, on those streets or in those, you know, near, very near those locations that we're, we're focused on, if there's a transformer there, we can, it looks like we could probably get those put in, uh, at no additional cost for installation. It would just be additional cost of actually running the lights annually, uh, which equates to, I think we figured it out, it's about how much? Yeah, about between eight and ten dollars a month is what they charge us per pole, per, per light. So you're looking at about a hundred and twenty dollars a year per light, uh, maximum, uh, for operational cost of the light. Well, the CBA workshop, we held that, um, reestablishing the community policing, wanting officers assigned to certain areas, the officers are assigned to those areas. Um, and we have a li- we have a list of which officers are assigned to which areas. Uh, once the Neighborhood Watch Program is, is reestablished and that the block captains are given, a list of block captains are given to the PD, then they will start engaging with them, uh, frequently. Um, one of the other things that came up was officers engaging people in traffic stops. Um, COVID dictated the reduced, uh, level of interaction with citizens when it came to traffic stops, of course. Our officers have increased that level of interaction again and will condition to, con- continue to do so as long as conditions warrant. Um, one of the other things that came up in the discussion with the chief on, on some of these things is, is, uh, uh, some comments about, you know, we, we've talked about how, uh, before the officers were doing more with community outreach, they were doing more with, um, with, uh, with traffic stops, they were doing more with these things. Uh, but a significant amount of time lately has been spent, uh, working on the inflated number of cases that were not solved, and that came from a council mandate. Uh, so those staff members were pulled back and put on cold cases, put on other things. And so the reduced manpower then was what led to the reduction in some of those interactions with the public. Um, officers are still assigned to specific areas, they're going to re- reengage with those groups. Um, and then one thing that, you know, everybody needs to remember in this, uh, because this is reality we face every day when it comes to our police department. Um, if we have a vacancy that occurs today, we can't fill that vacancy today because of chapter one forty-three and because of the CBA and because of, uh, with the civil service exam and everything else, it takes a while to get those filled. Uh, the last time that we posted positions, it was four months from the time we posted it until the exam could be created. The exam could be given and the background checks completed. And then that whole group, we only had two that were eligible for hire. And so we have vacant positions that after four months, we were not able to fill because we didn't have a qualified applicant to fill. And then we have to start that process again, and then it's a four to five month process again to hire people again. Um, there was a, a question last time about creating a community engagement, a stipend for a community engagement officer who has the responsibility of going out to talk to people about their concerns. Um, the concern that came back from, from the concern that we have with this is that you have one officer paid to do that and not having to answer calls, that's going to be counterproductive to the entire community policing for all officers. Um, we think this is going to be better solved by assigning response calls to all officers based on their areas of the city as assigned by the chief. So the concern there is if we have one officer that's making more money to do, to do, uh, less police type work and more sitting on the porch and visiting, then it's going to be counterproductive to the whole thing because then everybody else isn't going to want to do it because they were going to want to get paid more money to do the same thing. Um, so we think there's some other measures that can be done, uh, that will make that, uh, more effective. Uh, one of the other items was to bolster resources for the rapid response team. Uh, a clarification on that is the city doesn't have a resp- a rapid response team. What we do have is a special response team. Uh, but that team is not geared towards rapid response. Those are five employees who are shift officers that perform the special assignments as a group as it's given to them. Uh, I be- believe that Mr. Jordan and Chief Jackson have already been working on, uh, a list of needs uh, for the police department for this next year that would include, I believe it has some gear in it for that team, uh, to help the, help it make, help make their job a little bit, uh, um, more convenient or more complete when they go do it. Uh, there's the increased communications on crimes. Uh, we've talked about implementing a, uh, a weekly report that we could put on the website, uh, that the chief would do. It could go on the website, go on social media, other platforms. Uh, would basically be a report that would not give names or addresses on, it would not give it names or addresses on fa- family violence, would not include pictures or races on arrest, and it'd be more of a bold and style report. But it would be a report that would go out weekly so that people could know what's actually going on. Um, one of the other, let's see, one of the other items that came up was, and I think it was Councilwoman comped up, was that he wanted to see more, uh, focus on our youth. So just some things that we've been working on, city manager's offices, working with, uh, local groups on a number of programs to meet this need. On April first, we'll be holding the first Lamarck City Government Day with students from Lamarck High School. Uh, managers and directors will be spending the entire day touring the students through city facilities, teaching them and mentoring them. We plan on this being an annual program meant to develop student leaders. City manager's office is also working with a, a local group of youth leaders to develop and implement a Lamarck Youth Advisory Council. Um, Derek Lewis and I have been meeting about this since December, and Derek has provided a framework for review that offers a greater opportunity for success. Uh, we continue to work to flesh this program out with the ultimate goal of this being a youth council where the, the kids have someplace to go and air their grievances or talk about issues. But then there will also be a delegate off of that youth council that will sit on the city manager's diversity, diversity advisory council, uh, so that they have a seat at the table about all of our other discussions. Um, we were asked to look into some of the, the Safe Neighborhood Project through the DOJ. Mr. Jordan is working on reviewing that program. Um, the city's, the city manager's office has also had numerous meetings with the DOJ before, uh, the January nineteenth meeting. And is currently work, working on implementing the first program that they reckon, recommended to us, which is called the God Spot. Uh, Mr. Jordan is the point of contact for that program, and he's been in contact with numerous pastors already, and they're working on setting up the first meeting. So, and then one other issue that came up, uh, that was on there that I didn't really have, uh, well, two other things. I know one of the other issues that kept last time was we were talking about safe city overall was job creation and affordable housing. Of course, I, I think, uh, you guys know this is something that we work on every day. Of course, we've had the Amazon announcement, um, recently, and that, that is one of the things going towards that job creation and affordable housing. Uh, we are planning on having another announcement prior to the end of the year that, that falls in with this as well. Uh, hopefully that'll be sooner than later. Uh, but we do, we do, uh, have a major focus around here on bringing in jobs that aren't minimum wage jobs. Uh, we need to be bringing in, uh, organizations, companies, uh, businesses that are career-type businesses that are not just a, 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 a beginning, um, uh, job. They're jobs that actually lead to careers where people can live and work here, make a, make a good wage in those, in those jobs. And then on the, the streets, uh, working on our streets, um, we received a notice from Tex dot, uh, I'm thinking it was a week ago, well, maybe two weeks ago now. Uh, don't know how we didn't see the original um, notice, uh, but did not get it. But basically the notice was that there was an opportunity for some grant funding, uh, for sidewalks, but we had about six hours to respond. Uh, so I worked with Den very quickly. Uh, we got a very quick proposal put together, uh, and requested Tex dot to put, uh, sidewalks in on five nineteen between State Highway three and the feeder road, and then on Bayou from five nineteen all the way to seventeen sixty-four. Um, flesh those out, got the maps, everything in form, and we got a notice from them yesterday that they want to have an additional meeting on that. Um, so we're gonna, we're trying to get that additional meeting set up right now to see if maybe we might, uh, be able to, to get them to through a tiger grant that they have to fund putting those sidewalks in on those two streets. Of course, with it being Tex dot, it has to be a Tex dot road that they put them on. Um, uh, this, I think we, this was like the day after, um, the young man lost his life on five nineteen. Um, that's the second individual that we've had that's lost their life on five nineteen within the last, I think, three years. Uh, five nineteen's a, a pretty easy target for sidewalk. Um, and I know they've looked at them before. There were some issues with the drainage over there and with the easements and whatever else, but we told them we really wanted to, to work very hard on that and see if we couldn't figure out a way to get those sidewalks put in. And then along Bayou, it was not only, um, not only new sidewalks where we don't have them, but replacing, uh, the existing ones that are there as well. Uh, as we know, the part of the county road, uh, project, uh, is a re, is a repaving of Bayou Road. Uh, we'll have the new elementary ready to go fairly soon. Um, a new road in front of it, and it'd be really nice to have new sidewalks along that whole, that whole path. So as those kids are coming to school, they've got someplace safe to walk. Uh, and I think that's everything that I had on the list from last time. So questions, comments, additional stuff, we'll start writing it down.
Um, let, let me, let me just address one thing, and then I'll open it up to the rest of the council. Mr. Jackson, it's my understanding that we have two public information officers within the police department. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It's my understanding that they, both of them, uh, have stipends allocated to them. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I am, I am, I'm, I'm trying to understand why we wouldn't decide with, with as much controversy uh, that is surrounding our, our law enforcement community for various reasons, right, wrong, good, bad, or indifferent, right? Uh, nobody's, nobody's making, well, I'm not making a determination. Uh nobody's, nobody's making, well, I'm not making a determination on. On on anything other than the fact that there is controversy uh surrounding our law enforcement community. Um. I I cannot accept. That we cannot uh provide a stipend to a community engagement officer. Who would go around not on their normal shift or not in lieu of their normal shift or normal job function. Uh but would go around um at other times. Visiting with the community that is looking at our law enforcement community with skepticism, not all of our community members are. But there's a healthy number of members of our community. That are looking at our law enforcement community with skepticism. Why wouldn't we as a council, as. An administration and as a police department, why wouldn't we? Provide a stipend for an officer to go around our community, to engage the public. To see what the public is saying about how they wanna be policed and what they and answer questions about their police department. Why wouldn't we do that? And that's 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 part of sometimes the problem that we have. Uh in in not just our municipality, but municipalities in general. That's what we should be doing, if the city, if the community has a problem with one aspect of our operation. Why are we paying two people stipends to do public information? When we can have one of them do community engagement? That's the type of thing that frustrates me uh as an elected official, because it's a no brainer. The other thing uh that I heard, I I'm sorry, guys, but the other thing I heard of say. Was that we don't have a rapid response team, we have a special response team. I I don't care what it's called, we have a team that can be ordered. To assemble and provide job function as soon as Chief Jackson fills them, and in my opinion, that's a rapid response team. I would suggest. That we, instead of coming up with ways as to why we can't do what the community needs us to do. I would suggest that we take direction from council and do exactly what council is asking us to do. I don't think that that was intended in your report, Mr. Jackson, I respect it, I accept it. But I'm just offering this from you, I'm offering this to you uh in these two areas. I wanna see a community engagement officer, period, point blank, the end, I will not stop until it happens. And I want to make sure that the community knows that we have a team we can implement to address specific concerns in our community in a moment's notice.
Okay, so a couple. Oh, go ahead. Couple of co- couple of comments to that. One, um yes, if council wants to vote to have a community action officer and fund it, that's fine. We were in a workshop, in a workshop for direction, means a budget. Um so, but we can't just appoint an officer to that. The difference between the P I O's and this this uh P um engagement officer is that. Based on on the policy that we have for information going out of the PD, all the officers are not allowed to talk to the press. So we have two, the reason we have two is because the police department works twenty-four hours a day, and you can't expect one person to be available twenty-four hours a day. Um all the time, so that's why we did two over there. Uh that was to make sure patient was going out was factual, was complete, was not incomplete, like some of the stuff been going out by P. We're getting phone calls and we're putting out information. Uh was not based on opinions, but was based on facts. That's why we did two P I O's over there to make sure that the information that went out was correct. Um and that it was not based on opinion, but it was based on fact. Um the I, the concept of community policing means that all of them need to be doing it. So we need to have all of them engaged in doing this, that's what the thought is, if we pay one officer overtime to go. Speak to groups or to go do, if we if we designate one single officer. Chief Jackson can assign anybody any day, if there's a group that wants to meet, he can assign any person any day to go over there and meet with that group. But if we assign one person to do it and they're getting paid extra to do it, it will disengage the rest of them from doing it.
At at the end of the day, we are in a drastic time, Mr. Jackson. Uh and I think drastic times call for drastic measures. Uh if you were, if, I'm I'm not gonna even go there, I'm not gonna go 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 into that part of 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 any commentary. Uh I don't care what we call the person. Uh if we're having heartburn on on announcing and calling this person a a community engagement officer. I I don't care what you call them, we are in a crisis and in this crisis. A significant portion of our community has issues rightly or wrongly, again, I need to say that. With our police department. And when that happens, Mr. Jackson, it makes our police department less safe than they should be. What I'm saying is, we are in such a critical time, even if it, even if if it's for a year, somebody. I don't care if it's Mr. Jordan. Somebody from our organization needs to be able to go through the community. And visit with as many people as they possibly can to understand what the issues are. With our police department, if there are any. So that we would understand and know as a council how we need to respond to our community. If we're not doing that, then we're doing a disservice to the ranking five members of our police department. We have to, because every day that goes by that that doesn't happen. It puts our police department and our police officers in more and more jeopardy. So whatever I have to do to continue this dialogue. Hopefully till uh till such a time that the council can can understand where I'm coming from and hopefully support me in a public meeting. Uh then that's what I'm willing to do, uh because it's it's critical now. And 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 it's it's very frustrating that we ask things uh of our community and it's it's it's. Seems like there's always an excuse as to why we can't bring those things to pass, even when the council. Is asking for those things. And I don't, I, let me say this, I don't think that that's what you're, I know that that's what was not your intention, Mr. Jackson, I do. I don't want anybody to think that that's what you're trying to do. All I'm trying to say is. This was requested because this is what the community requested of us. And so when we continue to get, well, we can't do this, we can't do that. Then all that does is frustrate the community, and in turn, when you have a frustrated community, you have a frustrated council at the end of the day. I want us to have somebody out there personally, me, I'm just one vote, talking to the most disaffected and hurt. Uh and isolated folks in our community who believe that the police department is ineffective. Not saying that they are ineffective, I'm saying that people, some of us in the community, some of them believe that they can be more effective. I'm gonna leave that alone, uh so that we can get the rest of the council in here. But but I really want us to have that, uh Mr. Jackson, I'm not gonna stop until we have it.
Well, let let me follow up on that, I and I don't think we disagree. Um I don't think we disagree, I think we did, we may disagree on the mechanics of it, but I don't think we disagree disagree on the need or what we're doing to do that. Um I just, I don't think, you know, I, from a, from a, a, a employment standpoint, if we designate one person to do that and pay them more, the rest of them aren't gonna do it. Because it's not our job. And I think that was, that that's what we're trying to get at, is it needs to be everybody's job that works at the police department. Not one person's job that works at the police department to be engaged, that's what the council also asked for, was all the, all the police department to be engaged with the with the community. Uh so it needs to be a responsibility that goes to everybody over there, not to a single employee. I I I think that's the difference, what we're talking about here is is mechanics, what you're saying is you would like to have, I mean, what I'm hearing you say is you would like to have. That information that comes back from those groups or from whoever it is, whether it's Chief Jackson or Mr. Jordan. Or one of the, one of the the brand-new officers that's gathering that, that you would like to have that information put together in some type of. Of synopsis and brought back to the council to hear what the community thinks.
And 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 I'll, and also, hold on just a minute, let me, let me finish this statement, because I think that we got some, we have some synergy here. But but even more importantly than that, Mr. Jackson, uh in this, in this critical time right here. Uh what I'm asking us to do goes above and beyond regular community policing, right? It 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 goes beyond what what you're, what you're going to direct the officers to do. I'm talking about, there are some specific things that have happened in our community. And there's some specific analysis and observation and opinions about those things and about our law enforcement community. So this thing, this what I'm talking about, it's not, it's not gonna last in perpetuity. This is something that has to be targeted so that we can kinda get an idea of what those sentiments are, so we can deal with them in the moment. Next year, we may not need them. Because community policing will take hold, is that, do you understand that a little better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you, is that, I thought I heard talk one more call.
Yeah, I just, I had a, well, now I have a a thought on something you just said, and then I just had a logistical question, just throwing something out there, um. So, well, number one, I actually, I don't like the idea of this being something that is only for a short period, like I know what you're saying, that like. There is an imminent need right now, and we wanna target a lot of focused energy towards this. Solicitation of feedback from the community around this particular area of of policing, but um. I I mean, I feel like, you know, the. And, you know, just in line with the discussion that we've just been having for over two hours about violence prevention, like. Building these inroads with the community to then see them just stop, you know, like have these relationships that we start to build. If we're able to successfully have the PD develop a. More entrenched, trust-based relationship with the community, we we wouldn't wanna let that go. You know, like that, I mean, that would only just build upon itself and strengthen the whole network, so that's one, just one thought. But also, uh like logistically, so is, would it be possible to do something like? You know, because I really see where Mayor Bell is coming from, where it's like, we need somebody who this is like they're invested, right, like we want this person who. They aren't juggling all the other myriad responsibilities of a police officer, right, they're just like, this is what they're focused on. But I under, from what I hear, um city manager tink, you know, saying like, there's some real logistical reasons for not hiring a new person to just do this job. What if, would it be possible to do something like? I mean, almost like we did in school where, you know, you had like your classroom leader every week, and there was a new person assigned to that and it rotated, and. So instead of it just being like whoever was. You know, instead of there being somewhat of a random assignment, there was like a planned rotation of which officers are. Fulfilling that duty this week or for these three days, and then it just keeps going through so that people can plan for that, they know when that's happening and. There's, and maybe it's even a smaller pool of people, so it's not the whole PD, but maybe it's a small unit of people, um. And maybe it's seen as, I I don't know, I'm gonna stop asking questions, is that even something we think could logistically work, or what am I not thinking of?
Um, I that, I mean, that's definitely something that could be considered um of of a team. Um because that would rotate, if you had a team and it was a team of officers from different shifts. Um if a group wanted to talk at nine o'clock at night, then somebody on the night shift would be on that team and they could go talk to them. If a group wanted to talk at seven in the morning, then whoever's on that shift on day shift could go talk to them, that might be a, that might be a legitimate uh legitimate plan.
My my uh, uh, Mr. Jackson, my my concern with that is. You know, there's so much work for our patrol officers right now. Even if they, e- even if they had the, and I I'm sure that they do, I don't want, I don't want that to come out the way that it 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 was coming out. But but they have the heart to do it, but then they're inundated with calls, right, because they're working, they're patrolling, they're doing other things. So we really need to have uh somebody uh assigned to this task. Now, I don't have any, again, I wanna say this again, it could be Mr. Jordan. Uh it could be part of his roles and responsibilities. Uh but somebody has to engage the public in a, in a consistent way. So that that they could diffuse some of the things that are being said in the public and thought in the public, they can provide the correct information. Uh but also they can provide you with feedback, uh and provide the council with feedback, again, that's that's my my goal and that's my ambition in that. And you you have Mr. Jordan with you, uh uh the public safety is his role. So naturally, that would be something that I would think that he would be able to float into. If you uh advise against using officers at this time because you want to make them. Uh responsible for community policing, I can get with that, I have no problem with that. Let's let's uh, let's let you do what you do and and perhaps, you know, you have Mr. Jordan and and we might be able to to make quick work of this issue.
Well, of cour- and of course, the other thing that goes with that, Mayor Tru, yeah, the daily officers have so much going on. But then when you designate a single person to do it, you've pulled that person out of their due, that's. It's more load on whatever ship they were on or whatever crew they were on, or whether they were investigating, whatever they were, it's gonna be more of a load on those people, so. The, you know, we're trying not to, I mean, they're overloaded as overloaded as it is, so that's been a a major in this all the way along. But uh I have a couple ideas, um now that we've had some more clarity of discussion on that, that I think uh we can, we could look at that, I think you guys will be happy with.
Very good, very good, thank you, sir, for listening to us, we appreciate it. Mr. Uh Copian or Mr. Mishditch, whomever would like to go first.
I don't have any more questions on this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mishditch, Mr. Copian.
I I learned something today, I didn't know that uh we have a list of officers. Assigned to an area, I'd I'd like to know what. The officers are assigned to, uh and I don't know how they're assigned, what's the area? I'd like to get more information on that, that's number one, you, I don't need a response, I just, that was something new I learned. Uh number two. I also. And this is uh. At our Lamarck website. And we hope that our citizens believe that we're putting credible information. That's still pertinent. We have a community-oriented policing document that's called Our Customers Endbook. And uh it's even very nicely done, it says your personal community policing officer with a phone number and extension. Uh it's once again at our website, it's uh intended to community policing. To prevent crime, community-oriented policing is a new relationship with communities, allowing them a greater voice in setting local priorities. And involving them in F, in efforts to improve the overall quality of life within communities. And there's a nice definition, what is community? Uh this document goes all the way back to the contact numbers are with Chief Randall Ergon. So I hope that we do a better job in that regard, if it's a pertinent document, let's update it. Um I like the document, looks, looks good, it even addresses some of the concerns of Mayor Bell says in terms of. Uh this concept of your personal community policing officer. Uh that's number one, different subject matter, did I understand you to say tink that the cost for a light pole? The the electric service is eight dollars per year?
Between eight and twelve dollars, between eight and twelve dollars a month.
Oh, eight and twelve dollars a month for the outdoor pole, right?
For the electricity.
For the electricity, okay.
If if the pole already has a transformer on it, they will just add the light and it does not cost us. If they do not have a pole with a transformer, then they'll have to add in a pole and transformer, and they do charge for that.
Uh question for you, is there, is there a charge? And I, I don't really need to answer, I'm just, it's a question, is there a charge if we initiated, some other cities have done, I know Galveston did it. Uh or maybe it was Tex Dot along the causeway to switch over to LED lights that provide greater, greater light, greater clarity. Uh that, just a question.
Well, I can already answer that, there is a charge for that, but on occasion, you can find grants for that too, so that's something that we'll be looking at. Uh but the difference between a regular light fixture and the LED fixture, yeah, it's it's a significant difference.
It is a difference, okay. All right, and oh, last, one last question, is is as as we. As you and staff develop uh a plan, let's just say we've got some option here here in your neighborhood. Uh if we change things to LED lights. Is there an opportunity to, perhaps, under community policing, let our neighborhoods know, let our HOA know? That here's the costs, here's some options associated with it, and maybe a an association would be willing to share the cost. Uh of of the, of upgrading lighting or LED in our neighborhood?
We can always do public-private partnerships.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Um. Um, Mr. Jackson, would you uh on a, on a future uh. Um, Mr. Jackson, would you, uh, on a, on a future, uh, council meeting, would you put the resolution that you, uh, that you were speaking about? Uh, uh, for us to act on as, as relates to, uh, making sure they were able to partner with those other cities uh, in our law enforcement effort?
O- on the, on the task force?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll, the next one.
Okay, and the last question I had, um, was, we, we, we talked about the, the, the turnaround time from the time that we have a vacancy created in our police department to the time that we're actually able to bring a person aboard. Um, so my question is, do we have annual civil service exam to create lists uh, of, of potential applicants?
Uh, Chief, you want to respond to that?
Yes, we have more than annual, um, lately. So we, we do have to have one per year. Uh, a civil service entrance exam once per year because a, a, a eligibility list only lasts for one year. From the date the exam is issued, uh, is created or administered, and the list is created, it lasts a year. But we never last a year. Um, we, we always exhaust the list before that year is up. And, uh, and we have to administer another exam. As a matter of fact, we're giving another one on April eighth.
Okay, so, okay, so, so, so we, so it, it, the, the issue is that we're exhausting the list. Not that we're not, we're not annually, uh, uh, generating a list.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear the first part of what you said.
I, I said, Chief, so the issue that we're having is that we're exhausting the list. And it's not that we're not annually creating a list, we're just exhausting the one that we have.
Correct, and I'm having a hard time getting people to sign up for the test.
Got you, got you, okay.
And so, so like this last one, after this last one, when he, when he hired the last eligible applicant of this last one, he started working on getting the next test put together right then. I would, it's, we don't wait. Um, he does it as soon as he exhausts the list, he starts the next list, or starts the process to get to the next list.
Got you, makes sense, makes sense.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question for the police chief. Uh, Mr. Jackson, do, and I think the sheriff's department still does this, you've got deputies that are, that are basically volunteer deputies?
Reserves.
Reserve, the reserves. Do we, do we do anything like that here?
We have had a reserve program in the past, but all reserve officers must go through our field training program, program the same as our regular officers do. And being a, on a part-time basis, it is much, uh, a much longer uh, field training than a full-time officer. Now, uh, that being said, I'm still, I'm still understaffed. I still have vacant positions. My priority is to fill those vacant positions before I put any reserve officers in field training. Uh, so to answer your question, yes, we have had a reserve program in the past. We currently do not have any reserve officers. But if there, if, if we did have an inquiry for a reserve position, I would have to let them know, right now, my priority is to fill the ranks of, of, of full-time officers and giving, and providing them the field training, uh, program before I would a reserve.
And, and, and Chief, does that, are you still challenged on hiring individuals of, for the, uh, the non-certified, uh, positions in your department?
When you say hiring,
The civilian.
Are you, are you referring to the cadet positions? Or are you talking about civilian employees such as dispatch?
So, civilian employees, are we challenged in that area too?
Yes, we are. I'm currently short-staffed in dispatch, um, and, and we're, we're, we, we have two that are in training right now. Luckily, we were able to, we're able to get somebody from another agency to come over who had, who had training a, and, and experience with the computer systems that they use, but they still have to adapt to Lamarck's, uh, the differences between Lamarck and the agency that they came from. There's still a learning curve that they have to. Yeah.
Okay, and I promise, my last question. Okay, my last question. Are we competitive salary-wise for these positions?
Yes, we are. I, I'd have to say that we are competitive salary-wise. Uh, we're not, we're definitely not at the top of the scale. But we are, uh, we are, we are competitive, I believe.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had two quick things. So, um, first, I just want to say yes to the light map. That's awesome. And that will be, I mean, I can only imagine that will be a hunk of work to get that together. But that will be such a useful tool going forward and obviously makes sense for, I mean, I'm just so happy to hear that, like, talking about that helps us identify, well, where's, where's the cheapest places we could just start with? You know, like that low-hanging fruit concept. So excited about that. Thank you. Thank you, and thanks to Din. Um, the other thing was, um, the only thing I, I wanted to touch on was the talk of the consultant, that you were right, you know, we were, my notes and my memories from our conversation around that particular issue as a council were that it was pretty muddy, you know, and in the long, long list of things that you had to do, I think it was right that you left that. Um, here's how I feel about that right now, fellow counsel. Um, you know, I feel so motivated and it sounds like there's so much potential and, you know, a lot of work ahead of us, but so much magic that could happen just from the conversation we had today, right? The, the work we put in today, and there's already a lot of things that have been underway in other areas that fall under the umbrella of the Safe City Initiative, right? My biggest concern about us, or the whole reason I was even drawn to the idea of a consultant, is that I want us to make sure that we have it written down. Like, what is the plan? What does the Safe City Initiative mean, you know, and because I think we're all folks who want to take action as well as plan. You know, I think we're on this roll of, okay, let's have this workshop, and then, okay, here's the ten things we want to make sure happen after this workshop and boom, 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 we're just rolling, which is good, but I also think it makes it dangerous in terms of us ending up with a lot of to-do lists, but not these cohesive buckets, you know, to, to, to borrow Shannon's word of like, what is it that we're doing? You know, like, we have the bucket of, we're folk, what, the Safe City Initiative for the city of Lamarck is a five-year plan that focuses on policing, it focuses on the school system, and we have it broken down what we're gonna do there, and it's a, you know, what's the other bucket, you know, and is it business development? Is it, you know, uh, you know, uh, safe sidewalks? Is it transportation? Or what is it? And, you know, I think there's so many things we could do, but I think that idea, again, of what are the things we can implement immediately and what are the things that kind of fall into the longer-term schedule? Maybe we don't need a consultant to do this. You know, I think it would be great. But I'm not gonna be comfortable if we just keep plowing ahead and having these meetings and coming up with things that need to get done if we're not always relating it back to, hey, are we prioritizing the things that we said we would prioritize? You know, are we? And I think we should keep those small, because even when we say it's small, you know, just the conversation we had about, even if the only thing that was involved in our Safe City Initiative was getting lights and getting a, you know, getting this community engagement officer and then implementing the for our curriculum, that would be a lot. You know, like, that would be a lot of work, and I think those, those three things alone would be hugely impactful. But what I want is for us to be able to, not only so that we can communicate to our, you know, citizens and our residents, like, hey, this is our plan and this is what we're, this is what we're doing. But also so that we can feel proud of ourselves down the road too, when we do look back and go, hey, this was huge, and these are the actual things we accomplished. We didn't just create this enormous, ever-sprawling list of how to make our world better. We decided what can be accomplished, what is too big to accomplish right now, but we're putting in the bucket of two years from now, we're gonna talk about it, you know, that kind of thing. So, all that said, what do we do? Do we say, okay, we have another brainstorming workshop where that is the only thing we're doing is deciding? And we're all having our most, like, judicial hats on, and we're like, no, we're not creating these long, long, long lists of this. It is, we're coming up with three buckets and that's it. Or do we entertain the idea of hiring someone to lead us through that? Or do we ask for, you know, tink and, and city staff to draft what they think their buckets are, the buckets are based on what we've all talked about, and then we, you know, address that. Now I will stop.
Well, uh, Councilwoman McCall, if I, I think that we have to do two things simultaneously. I think that there's some immediate things that we're trying to, 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 uh, address here in this part of our discussion. Uh, these are things that, that, you know, we've received from just our observation as council members as well as, as, uh, comments from our constituents. So we're handling some of the immediate things, uh, that, that will, uh, help our citizens understand that we're serious, right, and that we are hearing this. But I think long-term, I, I think this, this discussion that we'll continue with, with Dr. Shannon uh, and the school district and, and the city of Texas City, I think that coming out of that discussion will be a comprehensive plan that will take five, ten years, uh, to implement. That'll be slower paced, that will be planned out, that, that'll be, uh, thought out, right? So, so I think, I think it has to happen in, 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 on, on two planes. I think there are some immediate things that we will always have to address as council. Uh, uh, with, 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 uh, the idea of having a safe city. Uh, but then there's the long-term piece, uh, that will have to be guided through because none of us are professionals in that field, not even the police chief, not, not the city manager, none of us are, right? So we're gonna have to have some help, uh, uh, with that piece, but I, I think that we have to do it on two planes, and that's the answer to, to that question.
And I completely agree, and that's, you just did a more concise way of summarizing what I was saying, you know, like, my big thing is, we have, we don't have this, like, if we all evaporated tonight, we don't have it written down what the plan was, what we were doing, you know, like, we don't have a clear, like, that idea of that one-page brief of if someone asked, what is the Safe City Initiative? Oh, it is both a immediate term and a long-term plan that addresses making our city safer, and it's got to focus on these three sectors. You know, and a, a lot of it, I guess, I think it wouldn't be that hard right now to get me to create this one-page brief that would make me feel better. Um, honestly, because some of it, like you said, has already been worked on, like, the work that the city has, that, 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 that staff and admin have already been doing is already a part of it, right? The workshop tonight is already a part of it. It's just, I'm never super comfortable when there's not a roadmap of any kind when it comes to, you know, being able to tell everybody, well, where are we going? You know, are we just driving the bus wherever it takes us, or did we have a plan? And I think tink, you were trying to say something, and I just kept going. So what is it?
Well, like, four, five, like, five or ten things, I think, but, well, limited to a couple. Uh, one, um, you know, there, I mean, there's some aspects of this. And, and, and I, I want to point out, Amy is still on here, and I really appreciate Amy being here tonight because Amy knows that Amy's department and Amy's building is, it, it's in some way, shape, form, or fashion in this. She's gonna be involved. I mean, we have a library that reaches youth, that reaches other people, and it's some, she's gonna have a niche in this somewhere. Um, so she came on tonight so she could listen and see what was going on. So I think, you know, there's, 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 there's all these things that are gonna branch out of this, um, that everybody's gonna have their little part to do. But I, I, I think, I mean, I agree, you, you can meet, 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 and if there's no, you know, you can, because every meeting, some, I mean, last meeting, we had all these things that come up tonight with this discussion with these people, I mean, great discussion with the two ladies tonight. And, you know, a whole bunch of other ideas, and we could have one of these once a month, and out of that once-a-month meeting, there would be fourteen more great ideas that would spring. But I think, I mean, I was just sitting here tonight, kind of thinking about this and trying to compartmentalize it. How, how can we, how, how can we look at this from a, and I came up with, with ELE, ed, environment, law enforcement, and education. I mean, those are the three things that we've really talked about. Our physical environment, you know, streetlights, um, uh, speed bumps, you know, whatever it is, uh, talking about, about, about the things that we could do different in the city to make our roads safer, sidewalks, uh, to make our, our physical environment in the city safer. Uh, the law enforcement component that goes with it, and then the education component that goes with it. I mean, those three things hit almost everything that we've talked about so far. Um, it's broad. It leaves lots of room underneath it to, you know, to, to flesh it out and, 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 and add and do and, 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 you know, continue to make it better, but, you know, maybe, maybe as a starting point, that one-page document that talks about, you know, those three things as what our Safe City Initiative is gonna be, I mean, that might not be, I, I can put that together if you want me to. I mean, I think I can come up with a one-pager that, that really tells the citizens, this is where we're, this is where we're starting and where we're going.
I would love to see that, and I think it would be helpful for us as a council, because then, you know, like Shannon said earlier, then we can rip things apart. We can then talk about, like, that actually doesn't resonate for what I thought we were doing, all that stuff. I, that's, that sounds good to me.
Um, uh, so that once we get this document to our council meeting, the council has looked at it, you know, researched it, thought about it, you know, made additions, attractions, uh, so that that can save us a step, uh, in this process. How about that?
I can do that.
Okay, very good. Let me, let me acknowledge, before we move on, let me acknowledge something that you said, Mr. Jackson, and I wanna, I want to give you credit. Uh, I heard you say that you discovered, uh, a grant opportunity. You seem to be the person that discovers all these grant opportunities. Uh, you're the grant person, uh, uh, for sidewalks. And I heard you say that you scrambled, uh, with, with Din to, to get something submitted. And so, uh, while we are always, uh, hard on you, uh, as we should be, being our city manager, I wanted to give you some kudos. Uh, that was, that was very, very good of you. Excellent. Uh, and I want to thank you for doing that for our community.
And those, those two roads are in, uh, indefinite need. They've been in need for a long time, and, you know, these tiger grants don't come around all the time, and when, when I saw what it was, it's like, we gotta jump today and get them something to work. Because it may be ten years before we see another one. So hopefully, uh, you know, hopefully, I know Din's probably sitting at, at home working on the, the proposed budgets for right now, because we didn't have much time between step one and step two either. Uh, with the fact that they did come back to us and say, we want to have a meeting, talk about costs, I, that's, I think that's good.
Good deal, good deal. Does anybody else have any other questions as it relates to Safe City? Moving to item B, and this, the rest of this should go very quickly. Uh, discussion possible action regarding appointed, appointing various members to various boards and commissions. Does anybody have any appointments that they'd like to make tonight?
Mayor, you want Robin to talk to you about what's in your packet, uh, first?
Yeah.
Robin?
Okie doke. In your packet, you have the, um, the current members and all of the people. Well, first of all, I gave y'all a copy of the, um, in case you did look on your, on each individual, uh, board or commission, and you're wondering who, how to get in touch with them to see if they want to stay on a board, if they want to be reappointed. Um, that contact list is back there, and also the current members of each board, and who appoints them and what year they need to be appointed at. I also, um, started a good list of, uh, going backwards. Ran a, ran a few, ran into a few problems with, um, in the nineties, when, uh, a lot of these annual boards and commissions were appointed, like, for their annual appointments. That's how they listed it on the agenda itself. They wouldn't even specify which boards, which commissions, which people were being appointed. All they would do was just, uh, make it a, make it an agenda item and say that annual boards and commissions appointments, and there would be a list. Well, our, um, um, previous staff didn't, uh, keep a lot of the backup with the, with the older agenda. So I don't have those lists. So at that time, back in the nineties, I don't even know, in the early nineties, I don't know who, who, who was appointed. And sometime before the early nineties, there were people that, that I can tell who were appointed, because they actually, the part, the person who did the minutes actually put them in the set of minutes. So that's where that list came from, and that's an ongoing list, and we're still looking at it. And Kira and I are actually having to go through minutes to find, um, you know, who, who, who has been appointed on which board and how long they've been there. And you can tell that, uh, and I think Dara's brought this up before, the Board of Adjustments really, really needs some people on that board, um. as well as some of the other ones. There's not a whole lot that need to be, to be done at the end of the year, but there are still some that are left from the, uh, 2020 that need to be appointed or reappointed.
Thank you so much, Robin, for putting this together. This is so exciting and I, I don't, I can't speak for everybody else, but I think, um, I'm not too concerned with appointments in the 90s right now. I do think it's valuable to have those records, you know, I, I, you know, obviously, but, um, having it for the past few years is really, really, really helpful and it's, it's giving me all the clarity I was hoping for and it's just, I think it's awesome and I, and I didn't check, this, this isn't up on the website yet, right? Because it's still being.
Not yet. Well, I was, I was, uh, speaking to Councilman Campion earlier and he, he, um, uh, drew my attention to an error that's on there, so I'm glad it's not on there yet. So I'm gonna look again to make sure we don't have any, any discrepancies before we put it on the website.
Well, that's great. Thank you for all the work to you and Kira for doing that. That's awesome. And I have an appointment when, if, if that's still open, if this is still the appropriate time to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to appoint Ms. Helen Key to the Board of Adjustments, um, in the, um, if, if I'm understanding this correctly, if I'm understanding everything, I do believe, oh my gosh, now I can't find the right calendar. There's too many beautifully colored calendars in front of me now. Um, but I'm pretty sure I have an appointment and, because it's currently sitting vacant. Um,
Actually, I think what you did on.
Or did I move Crystal Cooper to that position? And so this still says vacant, but I moved her to that position. Okay.
So I think it's actually.
Okay.
She was, you know, you couldn't get a hold of her, but she's, she, um, she's still interested in being on the board and she was actually at the last council, I mean, at the last BOI meeting, so.
I learned that and so that's why I was gonna move her over, but I was just, it's, it's okay that this, that there's a mistake here. I just was like, oh no, I have another vacancy. I'll, I'll fill it. But I will not. Never mind. Um, Crystal Cooper was at the last one, correct? Okay, cool.
So Crystal Cooper is actually your appointment and not an alternate?
Right. Correct. She, she was my appointment a couple of months ago, I think. And.
And so.
No, she, I, I think you, you, because, but when she, she was, she was appointed to that board before, um, um, Ms. Barrett got off.
Right, but I, I thought.
The Board of Adjustment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dara, what?
Yeah, Robin, you, you said she was appointed before Ms. Barrett got off the board, but Ms. Barrett was not on the Board of Adjustments.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, wrong name. Um, the, uh, I don't have.
Chairperson and we just lost the chairperson this month.
Lily and Patty, yeah.
The, what I remember doing was moving Crystal into a position of, out, out of alternate position to a position on, you know, the so. Non-alternate position. Okay. Perhaps I'm remembering incorrectly and maybe I appointed. Golly, sounds like I'm not prepared to do this and sounds like maybe we gotta reconvene, but, um.
I mean, it's, you, yeah. You do have an appointment. Vacant position up there at the top because Lily and Patty was your appointment to start with and she's no longer there. You can move Helen, you can move her up.
Well, that's what I would, yeah, I, I was trying to take direction. I knew that Helen Key had been present. She's voiced interest. She's already there, so.
Yeah.
So I will go back to my original. I would like to move her into that vacant position. And, uh, huzzah. Okay. Thank you.
This, this is a question, Casey or Robin? On this list, I, I'm, I'm still trying to understand all these dynamics. But how do I know what's my appointments?
Uh, you're in A, the person, uh, like on the, on the Board of Adjustment, you don't have, you have an appointment.
He's B.
I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, you are.
Uh, so anything that's in green, Joe, means that it's coming up. Though by the end of the year, you need to have me, you know, communicate.
The, the green on my list is, are my appointments?
No, 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 you're looking at the spreadsheet, right, Joe? You're looking at the.
Yeah.
Take a look at this type of, like, this table that has it for all the different counts, all the different commissions and boards. It's, um, Robin has a color-coded key where if, if there's a line in green, that means it's coming up. If it's in yellow, it's already passed due.
Oh, okay. I, I understand. Thank you. I was, I was, I looked at this, but I didn't see that. I see it now.
Column for a point.
Okay.
See who's who. Yeah.
All right.
Hey.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Campion?
Yes, sir.
Um, the, I, I think one of the things that, that, um, you need to consider, I think, I think Mr. Jackson was trying to communicate this to you. That part, that column where it says appoint with an S, those letters, those are the districts that appoint those, those folks. And so, uh, if you see a B in appoint, that means that that is the appointment that you have taken over from Mr. Lane. And if there's a vacancy and it has a B, that means that that, that's an appointment that you have to make. So you have to look at your B, your district.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Um, just really quickly to get through this, this, uh, Board of Adjustment issue. Uh, Robin, are we suggesting that Helen Key is still an alternate and we, and I still have an appointment, uh, on the Board of Adjustment to be made?
You do have an appointment on the Board of Adjustment because, uh, there's two vacant spots. All she's gonna do is move Helen Key up to her is, which is beside D and you still have your, your M, but that's not, that's not due until the 20, until 2022. Not on that.
Yeah, but it's vacant.
Yes, I'm sorry. Please, thank y'all for keeping me.
So my question is, is Crystal Cooper still an alternate?
No.
Yes.
No, she's not.
She's not? Is that your appointment, Casey?
I. Dara, am I wrong? I thought that I had moved her.
Yeah, I, I have trouble kind of understanding this, uh, as well, which is why Robin's been doing some research. So Robin, can you do this for us? Can you read off the current members of the Board of Adjustments?
Uh, David Pennington, Herman Harper, Louise, uh, Lu- Louis Jones, Crystal Cooper, and Helen Key are alternates. Now, okay, you just moved up to the vacant position besides your, uh, D, uh, Ms. McCallum. So.
Okay, so who, who has, never mind moving, coming into this, who has vacancies for appointments on the Board of Adjustments right now?
Okay. We've got Mayor, A, which is a vacant, vacant, uh, district right now, so nobody can make that appointment. And we have one B and C.
No, no.
Okay.
A, A and B aren't up yet. A and B will come up at the end of the year. D, D is vacant. If Casey's moving Crystal
Right.
or Helen into that one, then it's not vacant anymore. Mayor's is vacant. But you have Herman and Lois coded in green, which means they're still seated until the end of the year.
Right.
So the only vacancies are the one in D unless Councilwoman McCallum is moving one of those people into it or already has, and the one for the mayor.
So let, let's do this. Casey, who are you moving into, into your appointment? Uh, Ms. Ms. Cooper or Ms. Key?
Well, my intention was to move Ms. Key, but.
Okay.
Also, I did think that Crystal was a sitting member, not an alternate.
That, that's okay, because I got, I got you. I got you. I'll do, I'll do Crystal.
Okay, sounds great.
If you do Helen, I'll do Crystal. I got you.
Uh, for what it's worth to, um.
Move them all in there.
Mayor and. Alternates on Board of Adjustment, um, do just as much work as the, uh, sitting members because we have enough trouble getting a quorum. Um, the alternates almost always act as sitting members.
And that might be part of why I was thinking Crystal Cooper was a sitting member, but maybe she's been an alt, maybe I originally appointed her.
Yeah, every meeting she's been to, she's been needed as a sitting member.
Awesome. Great. Well, we did it. We did it.
But one, one more thing, because we've had so much turnover on that Board of Adjustment, we need alternates appointed by District D and District C now. So that, because the alternates can step up and function if they don't have a, a majority, if they don't have a quorum, right, Dara?
Yes, yes.
And so we need, we need those alternates appointed ASAP as well. So we make sure, because Board Adjustments has a statutory responsibility to meet.
Understood.
So that, that, that means, uh, Casey and Robert, uh, uh, we, we, we need appointments. I know, I know Robert's trying to hold off and I, I get that. Uh, uh, but as soon as we get a chance, guys.
I'll do lottery, you know, and Dara, may I connect people to you if they have questions? Okay.
Absolutely.
Can do.
Robin, dispatch ditch, can you, uh, if there's any applications for these particular boards, would you email them to me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for that compliment, Mr. I know, I know what you're trying to do, but on this one particular board, we might just need you to pinch hit.
Oh, may I ask a question then, as I'm looking over cemetery board? Then the two people, their term of, has expired.
Yep.
Two and three.
Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay. And have they been notified or they've been asked if they'd like to continue or, or is that my duty or what?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and I mean, we actually did, I mean, we've, I think as of last meeting, we did a little bit of changing to notification, correct? But it.
Well, we haven't formalized it yet.
I haven't.
Oh, right, no, no, we're still in the middle of discussing all of that. But yes, so
Yeah.
the way we've all been operating is that it's the councilperson's, uh, responsibility.
Reaches out. Okay. All right. Thank you for the guidance.
Okay, uh, if there's no other discussion about this, um, we have moved to now to our requests and announcements from council. Does any council member have any requests, uh, of the city manager or his staff or any announcements they'd like to make?
Mr. Mayor, do we vote on those or not? Those.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're, you're.
Is there motion?
You're right, you're right, Joe. You're right. I'm trying to get out of here fast and what we need to. Um, I made a nomination of Ms. Key, uh, um, Councilwoman McCallum has made a nomination of, uh, uh, Ms. Cooper, or vice versa. Uh, Robin, would you read that back for us, please?
Uh, yes. Councilman, member District D made, um, made an appointment to move Helen Key up from her alternate position to a board member. And Mayor, you moved Crystal Cooper up into the position from also an alternate into a member of the board, on the Board of Adjustment.
Very good. Is there a second? Is there a second to those nominations?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we have come to, uh, and thank you for that, uh, Mr. Campion. Now we've come to our request and announcement, uh, from council. Does anybody have any requests for the city manager, staff, or any announce they'd like to make?
I have one announcement. If there's nothing else that comes up, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, just, uh, wanted to, uh, reiterate again, um, we, uh, for those of you that, that didn't see it today, we did a drive-by parade at Bydew Pines, um, nursing home today for Mr. Melvin Campbell, who turned 111 years old yesterday. He is the oldest living resident of Galveston County. Uh, we did not know about it until this morning, well, actually until early afternoon. So since I found out this afternoon, we threw something together real quick and ran over there. Um, he's got more hair than Mr. Jordan combined, um, and he still moves pretty good, so he's doing pretty well. Um, but he was all smiles. Um, they had the whole staff and everybody out there with him, so it's really, it was really good. We had good participation. Sheriff's Office showed up and went with us and staff and we, uh, in between calls, just worked out, just right, both fire trucks were able to make it. He, uh, he really, uh, really liked it and they appreciated it. So happy birthday to Mr. Campbell.
Happy birthday, Mr. Campbell. Any, anybody else have any other announcements? Requests? Uh, Mr. Jackson, uh, in light of one of the, uh, one of the, uh, public comments that we've received on tonight, uh, it's, it's my understanding that you're working on a comprehensive communication strategy that you would like to roll out. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, will you have that available, uh, for us to consider at our next, uh, scheduled council meeting?
I hope so. Um, that's the plan, uh, depending on how many fires come up between now and then. That's, that's the, that's the plan.
Okay. Will you be able to speak to some of the, some of the comments that were made, uh, at the next council meeting through a report or something?
Sure.
Okay, uh, Dara?
Yes, sir.
Uh, there was, there was also, uh, uh, a comment made about us having some, uh, the, uh, an ability or the authority to direct you to do something as it relates to, uh, the, uh, uh, an opinion you sought, uh, from the Attorney General. Would you, would you be able to brief us in, in a memo on what, what that pertains, what that's about, so that we can get some clarification?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let, let, let's, let's do that. Uh, uh, and Council, I want you to have as much information as you possibly can uh, on this, uh, on this, uh, uh, citizen's, uh, hearing, on Mr. All's hearing. Uh, so, because I want you to be able to make a decision that's educated and informed. Uh, so we'll give these folks time to, uh, submit information to you. Uh, we can definitely, uh, uh, deliberate on this, discuss and direct, uh, um, as soon as we see fit. Uh, but we want to give, uh, uh, Ms. Purnell and Mr. Jackson a chance to respond in writing to us uh, as it relates to, uh, Mr. All's comment. Is that fair, Council? I want to make sure that I'm being fair and I'm doing what I believe, uh, is the right course of action in this case. Hearing, hearing the one, I, I would assume that that's the right course for us to take. Uh, if there's nothing further, uh.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I do have.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I do have something. Just one last, I would, uh, remind our, our residents and all of us, all of us that are involved in and, and that enjoy understanding our, our two-year legislature and the process that goes through, to please pay attention to the bills that are being filed, uh, at the legislature. There are various, I mean, it's easy enough to Google it and, uh, or go to, uh, the Texas Municipal League site, others that, uh, set forth the, uh, proposals that are, that are on there. Uh, one of them, and, and we talk about, and I, I've learned to appreciate this. I've, I said for the first three months and, and Tink, when you and I first met, I said I was gonna devote my time to listening to you guys, understanding this process and I'm, I'm feeling more comfortable to be a bit more engaged. But one of the proposals that are out there will, um, drastically limit the ability of small cities like ourselves to be involved in joining nonprofit groups in, um, in impacting legislation that might adversely, uh, cost our city. And then, um, suddenly, you're gonna find ourselves, if that bill passes in particular, that, um, we are either going to have to, probably have a staff person for that, Tink. As best I understand the bill, or alternatively, each of us as council members are gonna have to step up as a volunteer. We are volunteers anyway. But to suddenly become advocates on, in, at, at, at Austin conceivably with regard to issues that are, that are of importance to our citizens. So I just ask that be aware of all the pending legislation, uh, that is out there right now. And it's, it's the possibility of how. And it's, it's the possibility of how it might financially impact, uh, our, our small municipality. And that's my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, follow up to that real quick, two things. Uh, first, uh, Councilwoman Copion, appreciate that, that comment. Um, that has been a revolving door for the last two legislative sessions at least. Um, and that has all come about in response to. Cities being organized through TML and, and arguing against the proposed changes in the tax legislation. Um, and their whole point is they want to try to get rid of TML because TML informs us and organizes us, and they don't want us to be able to be members of it. Um, so I'll just, I'll leave that at that. And Mayor, don't forget, we have to have an executive session before we leave real quick, too.
Ah, yes, 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 yes. Anything else? Okay, we will, we will now, uh. Is, is, is Kyle available?
Kyle, right, Kyle, you there?
Yep, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, okay, we'll now leave our regularly, uh, scheduled special meeting, uh, and we'll move into executive session at nine sixteen PM. Nine sixteen PM. Kyle, would you give us the button, please?
And Mayor, just for the record, this is under five fifty-one point oh seven one of the Open Meetings Act. It's just something that's come up, uh, since the agenda was, was posted, so we're using our.
Let me, let me read it so that we can be legal. Which, which number, which number did you give, uh, uh, Dara?
Uh, it's section five fifty-one point oh seven one, consultation with attorney.
Okay, executive session, the City Council, uh, of the City of Lamarc, Texas reserves the right to join into executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss any matters listed below, as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney. Thank you. Kyle, you may give us the button now, sir. Thank you.